You guys can decide who will do that one.
I could have sworn it was Dr. Breggy.
We'll be right here. And congratulations, by the way. That's exciting. That's awesome, anyway.
Okay, so we'll just wait for then. So do you want to you guys sit in the front? Oops. Sit in the front row. So I showed Sarah, so you'll say it's one of you'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then it's this one and this one. So you just need to check, oh, here comes Sarah, so you guys can decide who's going to.
You want to do the Pledge of Allegiance? I don't remember.
Okay, I'll do the pledge and I'll do this, and then you do.
Does that sound good? Okay, so then you guys can sit down, and then you'll be called up when it's time to read it. I think you just for the Pledge of Allegiance, you'll do that, and then you'll just read it. So they'll call you guys up for that, and then you'll take your seat, and then you'll come back up for your. Sounds great. Okay, you guys good? Okay.
Good evening, community members. Very happy to see everyone today on September tenth, twenty twenty-four, for our regular board meeting. Before we get started, I wanted to just have a moment of silence. As you guys know, there have been not one but two tragic school shootings. I wanted a moment of silence for that. I also continue to show my respect and utter dismay at the situation in the Middle East with the hostages and the continuing situation. So if we could have a moment of silence, thank you. If Kebab wants to kill the music. Okay, thank you, welcome. To get started, we're going to have our flag salute from Benjamin Bakshian and Sarah Jiang. We will all rise.
Awesome. Face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, if you two could remain and present us with the mission and vision statement.
Yeah, so the BHUSD mission statement is educational excellence, and our vision statement is our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Good evening. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture, which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and learning property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Breggy, any report of closed session?
Thank you, Dr. Stern. There is no action in closed session report this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, it is our absolute honor and privilege to recognize our Beverly Hills High School National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. And I want to say that this shows not only tremendous academic excellence, but also last year, I believe, we had one semifinalist. This year, we have five, and also it was pulled from a larger pool of over a dozen who were commended. So this is incredible scholarship, and I would like to call up Drew and Shannon to come up.
Everyone, it's a pleasure to be here with you. As you may be aware, each October, our freshmen and juniors take the PSAT. The PSAT, or Preliminary SAT, is a standardized test administered by the College Board in the United States. It serves as a practice test for the SAT. It assesses skills in evidence-based reading and writing, as well as math. The scores are used to gauge readiness for college-level work and help students identify areas of improvement before taking the SAT. This spring, our sophomores will take the PSAT, and our juniors will take the School Day SAT. Dr. Seaman brought the PSAT SAT suite to BHHS in two thousand nineteen with the support of Dr. Breggy and the board. It would be hard to overstate the importance and impact of this opportunity on our student community. It provides another data point for us to gauge student achievement on a national level, enable students to be prepared to take the SAT, and provide students the opportunity to take the SAT at their own school site on a school day. While during the post-pandemic, there has been a trend to make standardized test scores optional for admission to colleges and universities. However, we have seen a resurgence in selective schools reversing course and requiring them. Some of these schools include MIT, Brown, Dartmouth, Georgia Tech, Northwestern, Purdue, Yale, Cornell, Harvard, Caltech, University of Texas at Austin, and Stanford. As the PSAT and SAT have become completely digital, some students in California had difficulty last year securing a test site to take the SAT. Our students will not have that concern and will be fully supported by the district and provided the opportunity to take the SAT at school after having been prepared by the opportunity to take the PSAT. The PSAT test that juniors take each October also qualifies students for National Merit Scholarship programs. We are pleased to share some exciting news involving current seniors who took the PSAT last fall, and I invite our principal, Mr. Stewart, to make this announcement.
Thank you, Ms. Cabelas, and this is the real exciting part. So this evening, we are very pleased to announce this year's National Merit semifinalists with standing for those students. These students are among less than one percent of the nation's high school seniors who qualify as semifinalists. Semifinalists receive standing based on the two thousand twenty-three PSAT. Semifinalists will have an opportunity to advance in the competition for merit scholarship awards, and will be working with their high school counselor and our college counselor along that process. These students will compete in the National Scholarship Competition for finalist standing in spring of twenty twenty-five and further scholarship opportunities. As I call your name, if you could please come up and proudly join us appear to be recognized by the Board of Education. Our first recipient is Mr. Benjamin Bakshian. Our second is Ms. Tali Goldkorn. We also have Vincent Lee. Andrew or AJ Smiler, please come on up. And then, last but certainly not least, Ms. Sarah Jiang. On behalf of Beverly Hills High School, I want to congratulate these tremendous students on their national recognition and for making us so proud in representing our Normans, BHHS, and BHUSD and the high academic standards that we strive and represent. Congratulations, you five. Dr. Breggy also has some certificates for you, and then we're going to do a photo opportunity as well.
Congratulations, guys.
Absolutely.
I just want to say congratulations to you all. I love going to class with you and going to school with you, and I know you guys are such amazing students, and I know you're going to go a long way and represent our school tremendously, and congratulations again.
Congrats, I think this is the highest ratio that we've had in I don't know how many years, Dr. Seaman, but as long as I've been sitting up here, it seems to be we're heading in the right directory, trajectory as far as students achieving this feat, so good luck with college applications.
Congratulations, you made us proud, and you're the best news of the school year so far. And I just want to congratulate not only you, but your parents. When moms are here with that smile on their face is what it's all about. And thank you to your hard work and all of your teachers, everybody who's taken, you know, the time to educate you and do the best that they could with you. We're grateful to all of you.
Well, I feel like I've had a little part of this family, and I'm so proud. I'm beaming here. I know the parents are practically to the point of tears. I'm so proud. And another student that I had that I'm so proud of, and I really, I can't begin to tell you, you know, they say that only less than one percent of the kids actually are shown in this pre-field of preschool, the finalists, or the pre-finalists, semifinalists. We have over one percent of our faculty of students, so we beat that odd, and I just want to remind you of that. And my full congratulations to all of you. I hope that you get the school you want to go to. Whatever it is, I give you all my kudos to do it, and good luck in your last year in school. I really love seeing you there.
Congratulations to all of you. I know that there's a lot of outward verbal praise and loud praise for sports and arts and things like that, and it's a little more of a quieter triumph, but make no mistake, we see you loud and clear, and you make us very proud and very happy, even if we're not screaming from bleachers. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Also, congratulations. I'm sorry, it's a little awkward to speak into this and say congratulations. What a great personal recognition this is for you, but I really want to thank you on behalf of the entire school district for your contributions over the years, because that's where it really pays off for us as a school district that you're representing us. So I can't thank you enough, and congratulations.
So I think they can have a seat now, and.
All right, and tonight, we have a two-for-one. Our spotlight opportunities are somewhat few and far between, so we are actually going to celebrate a second amazing program at our school, and that is our Norman Aid Wellness Center, and so I would love to turn it over to Ms. Norman Franks and Ms. Peppin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. I first of all want to thank our board and our cabinet for. Sorry, I realized we don't have our slides up yet. Hold on. All right, I'll start again. So I want to thank our board and our cabinet and our administration for prioritizing students' wellness with your continued commitment to BHHS, including the provision of the Maple Counseling interns and addition to our new amazing wellness counselor. We've been able to operate truly as a comprehensive wellness center. How do you guys see this? Are you able to see it? No?
It'll pop up. It's delayed.
Perfect, okay. All right, so. So research shows that having wellness centers implements, implementing wellness centers helps with attendance, with grades, with graduation rates, as well as helping with mental health crises. So the Norman Aid Wellness Center, we provide a robust three-tiered system of support, addressing a wide range of student mental health needs from school-wide wellness programs to targeted interventions and intensive support for those requiring additional assistance. This model has allowed us to extend our services far beyond traditional counseling. Each month, we deliver over three hundred counseling sessions, and our mental fitness lessons impact about four hundred students. Additionally, programs like our peer counseling and Norman Connection videos reach our entire student body. In alignment with BHUSD's commitment to educational excellence and valuing student wellness, Norman Aid adheres to the California Department of Education's Mental Health Support Plan. Our services are proactive and preventative. We don't wait for referrals or for students to seek help after an issue arise. Instead, we are actively engaging in classroom, producing podcasts, offering presentations, hosting lunch events, and sharing mental health education and resources. This approach ensures that students are equipped with the awareness and knowledge to access support for themselves or for a friend when needed. The programs and services we're presenting tonight reflect how we effectively address students' mental health needs and overall safety within our community.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. So I am Jen Peppin. I am the new wellness counselor. I am a trained school counselor, and I am deeply committed to fostering student success in three interconnected areas: academics, college readiness, and social-emotional learning. I believe they are profoundly linked, and addressing all three is crucial for students to thrive. In my role, I provide individual and group counseling, helping students navigate personal, social, and academics challenges. I also work closely with families acting as a liaison between students, parents, teacher, and administration to ensure strong communication and support. Additionally, I serve as a member of the Attendance Review Team. I am also part of the Crisis Response Team and the PBIS Team. Furthermore, I also oversee the daily operations of our wellness center and manage the interns. Through my work, I strive to create a supportive and nurturing environment where students can succeed both academically and emotionally. So our wellness team is a collaborative group dedicated to supporting students' well-being, led by Ms. Norman Franks. We also have sixteen Maple Counseling interns, and we have sixteen peer counselors. Some of them are here tonight. The Maple Center interns are committed to being on campus one day a week, providing students with flexible counseling options. Students can choose between short-term and long-term counseling based on their individual needs. They can visit Norman Aid before school, after school, during lunch, via Zoom, or with teacher permission during class time, ensuring they have access to support that fits their schedule. In addition to their counseling responsibilities, the Maple Center interns play a crucial role in supporting the avid program. They will be tutoring students four times a week, helping them strengthen their academic skills and achieve their college readiness goal. This involvement ensure that students in the program receive both academic and emotional support, reinforcing the connection between academic success and social-emotional well-being. Our interns are under the clinical supervision of Maple Center supervisors. They receive weekly individual and group supervision. In addition to their external supervision, I provide them with guidance on the Beverly Hills High School procedures and offer support with specific students when needed. Ms. Norman Franks steps in to provide additional support, especially when crisis situation arise. As a former pupil service and attendance counselor, I value intervention that supports consistent attendance. By providing students with access to counseling, we ensure they receive the essential support they need for their well-being, which in turn enhances their overall success and engagement in school. To prevent misuse and ensure that visits to Norman Aid do not negatively impact attendance or grades, we have implemented a system to keep teachers informed. Unless a student is experiencing a mental health emergency, they must obtain permission from their teachers before visiting the center. This is to make sure that teachers are aware and approve of their absence. We also utilize smart pass to track students' arrival and departure times, and afterwards, an email with these details is automatically sent to the teacher, keeping everyone updated and informed. This system guarantees that while students receive the mental health support they need, their academic responsibilities remain a priority.
So my new position as a wellness coordinator is to focus on programs. So I oversee all the services and programs provided by Norman Aid. My favorite program is our peer counselors, which I'll introduce them to you in a moment. I also provide crisis prevention, response, and education. We do wellness events during classes, as well as school-wide events, which I'll talk about more. And I'm here to support students and families, as well as staff. Each month, we host wellness campaigns through our monthly aid program, which is part of our wellness curriculum. These campaigns are carefully crafted to offer targeted services and programs that nurture the mental, emotional, and physical well-being of our school community. Our peer counseling classes, podcasts, and school-wide presentations, including grade-level sessions, are all centered around our monthly themes. This month is National Suicide Prevention Month and Norman Aid Seek Support Month. So I'm going to begin with some concerning statistics about teens' mental health, and then I'm going to explain how our prevention efforts have made us a model school for suicide prevention. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death amongst teens aged fifteen to nineteen, and a leading cause of death for teenage girls. Major depressive episodes in teens have risen by fifty percent in the past decade, and one in five teens struggle with their mental health. Norman Aid aims to destigmatize seeking support and reporting concerns. Our services meet the American School Counseling Association's recommendations for a suicide-safe campus. This includes having a crisis response team, providing suicide risk screenings, ensuring easy access to mental health services, creating a safe environment, and offering education for parents, students, and staff. Each year, we offer grade-level presentations to support our students' well-being. Today, which is why I'm tired, but I'm wearing, representing, wearing our shirts as our peer counselors, today we begun our SOS program, which is the sign of suicide prevention for all freshmen. The goal is to educate students on recognizing warning signs and to encourage them to seek help if they're concerned about themselves or a friend. Each month, we lead mental fitness lessons in PE and dance. We explore our monthly aid themes. These lessons focus on building resilience and teaching coping strategies for students for their life skills. This includes our Make Today Well-Live podcast, guest speakers, and interactive activities to engage students and promote mental health awareness. We have two peer counseling classes, and I have a few of my peer counselors here to talk to you about our program. But first, I want them all to introduce themselves. If you guys can come on up.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Lawrence, and I'm a part of peer counseling.
Hi, my name is Alexander Guo, and I'm part of the peer counseling.
Hi, my name is Chloe Morobodi. I'm a senior, and I am a peer counselor.
Hi, my name is Bella Deshera. I'm a sophomore, and I'm a part of the Norman Aid Peer Counseling Group.
Hi, my name is Amiel Mizrahi. I'm a sophomore, and I'm a peer counselor.
Hi, my name is Amiel Mizrahi. I'm a sophomore and I'm a peer counselor.
Hi, my name is Remy Everishemi and I'm Norman Aid's Head Peer Counselor and Leader of Programs. Peer counseling consists of ten mental health ambassadors. We offer many programs to support our peers. For example, one of my favorites is our monthly Make Today Well-Live podcast, revolving around our monthly theme for the month. So for example, like SOS. Our podcast has helped me tremendously when it came to speaking in front of people and speaking in public. So I can just say for myself that peer counseling has helped me so much.
Hello, I'm a peer counselor. I'm a junior. As peer counselors, we write, film, and edit the Norman Connection, and we advertise for events and provide mental health education based on monthly topics. This is a short clip from our most recent Norman Connection, which provides information about our SOS program. There we go. Wait, you almost said it over again. We host Monthly Wellness Wednesday Lunch Activities to help students feel more comfortable with Norman Aid's services and provide support for their mental health. At these activities, we provide treats, discussions, crafts, and games.
Oh, yes, and puppies.
Led by our peer counselors. These activities like these is what made me want to sign up for the peer counseling program. Our next lunch event on September eighteenth is Help Your Friends Feel All Their Feels, to help students understand how to help their friends and the importance of friendship. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Next month is our Substance Misuse Prevention Month, and we will continue with our monthly programs by having presentations for students as well as our podcasts. We will also be celebrating Red Ribbon Week and we will have a Safe Halloween Lunch Event. So there's many opportunities for you to stay informed. We have our monthly newsletters, our Norman Aid website. You can follow us at BHHSNormanAid. We also share data to Student Services that shares our reach with students. And we have the Norman Connection videos, which are probably the most fun to follow. And that would be our peer counselors sharing all of our programs as well. And you're always welcome to come visit Norman Aid and reach out if you have any questions. Thank you so much for having us.
And I just wanted us to give one more round of applause to our peer counselors in particular. One of the things that we ask is for students to, at the very least, not do the wrong thing. But these are among our very best students that are not only not doing the wrong thing, they're constantly striving to do the right thing and, most importantly, pull up other students that may be struggling and also leading by example. So I just wanted to thank you guys for being such an amazing part of our school. So thank you very much.
Can I invite a few questions from our board members?
Sure.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. So what can one or all of you share what it is that drew you to want to do it? And like, if you could, without revealing any confidential information, but like, types of problems you might encounter with your peers?
I felt so anxious myself all my freshman year, so Ms. Norman really helped me, and that made me want to join. I wanted to help other people, because of how she helped me.
Yeah, speak into the microphone. Okay. That's okay.
Right. So what I was saying is that I was dealing with anxiety my freshman year, so Ms. Norman Franks really helped me, so I wanted to implement me helping other people because of how she helped me.
Great. So you're able to give that kind of wisdom and help to peers because you went through it?
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
And she's been one of our peer counselors for four years, so we're going to miss her a lot.
You've helped a lot of people. Thank you. Anyone else want to?
Hello. I wanted to be a peer counselor because I want to study psychology and also I love helping others and I'm always like the friend, like the person my friends want to reach out to whenever they need someone to talk about, like without judgment. So I'm glad I can do it in a class and just learn more about like the program and the stuff that we can do and to help others.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? So I'm happy to see that you guys are out there and that there's a need, clearly. And there's nothing like relating to a peer or someone of your age when you're having a particular struggle that you maybe don't want to share with your parents or your teacher, and I think you guys are very valuable. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you very much for the time in service that you provide in our school, but also for being here tonight. And so we recognize you. We have a certificate for you we'd like to present to you and also to Ms. Norman Franks and Ms. Pepin. So congratulations and thank you.
I don't believe we have any public comment at this time. Actually, members would like to go around too and talk about some of the elements of the presentation from the Norman Aid and the peer counselors. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I know you guys do a lot for our school and for our students especially, and everything you do helps our students in such a unique way that I know many other schools don't have. And we're grateful for all of you, grateful for everything you do. Thank you for making each step. I know it might take some progress, but you guys don't give up. You keep helping those students and even those who may be hiding it and hiding their struggles. You can always come. They always know they have a safe space at their school with counselors who are all inviting them to help them. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would just say thank you and Reese says hi.
Hi, Reese. We missed you.
Thank you for sharing with us. I appreciate it. I just wanted to know, is this an elective?
Yes, it's an elective.
So then it's an elective that, for example, you've taken for all four years? And then, so coming out of the eighth grade, you signed up for... What did you sign up for?
So my experience was a bit complicated. I joined...
And I don't want to evade your privacy.
No problem. I joined in January. Like I was saying, I was dealing with some, you know, like anxiousness and things like that. So I talked to Ms. Norman Franks, and her being her amazing self, she offered me a role as a peer counselor, not because she needed me necessarily, but because, you know, she saw something in me, like I, you know, needed some assistance with things, and she was there.
Got it. Thank you.
So our peer counseling class originally was students running the front office. This team is a class. It's our fourth-period class. We're going to be working on getting it to be a college prep class. And they, you know, they meet every day with us, or at least during the B-days. But it's, when Remy started, she was started as more of a counseling aide.
Got you. And then is there like a prerequisite, an AP Psych or something that goes along with it?
There is not, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Judy, you took the words right out of my mouth again.
Jinx, jinx.
We think alike. I was going to ask the same question, but I do want to tell you that one thought that occurred to me, that Beverly Vista has a peer counseling program at their school. Did any of you start there or know about it and that like a pathway program?
Well, since it was new last year, but we have three of the peer counselors from Bulldog Aid that are with us now.
Yes, and it is an elective, I guess, at the high school also. And I just want to make a comment about the Wellness Center. I really think that the amount of work you do with what you, all the activities and everything, it seems like you're just like a one-armed paper hanger in that department because it seems like you're constantly doing things, keeping busy, preparing programs and activities for the kids, bringing in speakers. And I really want to comment that it's a great program. And I know that we are one of the first schools in the country to have such a program, and I think we're very proud of you all. So thank you for coming tonight and sharing your story.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the adult leaders. Done a great job. Nothing further for me.
All right. Thank you all.
We do have public comment. I'd like to welcome Sahar Yashar, World Languages, regarding World Languages. Thank you, Sahar. You have three minutes, and if you need us to lower the microphone for you?
I think it's okay. Hi, I'm Sahar Yashar, and I have a child at all three schools right now. I do have a ninth grader who is taking Spanish III honors. He's, despite his best efforts, it's proven to be challenging for him. And he's not confident, and I know he's not the only student in the class to feel this way. I know there's many, many students that have tried to drop down to either Spanish II and unfortunately, Spanish III, not honors, is no longer available to this freshman class. It is an elective. I'm asking the board to please either open up another Spanish II class so that these students, I think there's about twenty of them that want to switch out and are in the same boat as my family. You know, we want to be able to give the students a chance to succeed, a chance to get into a good four-year university. Getting a C or a D in a Spanish class, not a good option. And unfortunately, I've spoken with the counselor and he's saying hands are tied. We can't do anything, even though it is within the drop period. So hopefully, I'm coming to the board hoping that we can come to a resolution, open up another class so that these students are, you know, are able to succeed and move forward with their, in a good way, in their high school career. And, you know, I feel like it's causing a lot of stress for the students as an elective class. So hopefully, I do have, I have met with the teacher. She, I feel like she agrees with me. The students, some of them just need a little bit more time to get to that level that she's at. And hopefully, they can be better prepared when they're coming from the middle school to the high school in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to consent? I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items B1, C, G, and H.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So I had a question. So I'm going to make a motion for item B1, the Certificate of Personnel Report.
I'll second the motion.
Sorry, seconded by Ms. Marcus?
Thank you. And I had a question on the CTIP. You didn't have to sprint.
Also, tell us what CTIP stands for.
Sorry. Hi, good evening, everyone. CTIP stands for California Teacher Induction Program. What it is is, what CTIP does for our staff is not every school district can a new teacher to the teaching...
I'm sorry, Dana. Can I ask my question?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Yeah.
Love this guy's fervor. I dig it. You're all over the place. The requirements to be a CTIP instructor, I read through them and thank you for the response. The only one that, and I'm wondering, first of all, do we dictate those requirements? Is that, or is that done through state?
Yep, that's through the California Teacher Credentialing Program. So the CTC oversees the CTIP. But we're fortunate that we, in collaboration with Culver City Unified, we wrote to be able to host our own clearance program, and so...
My only question is the one-year requirement for a teacher to be it as opposed to two or three years was my question because I feel that it would be better to have candidates who are more established. And you may have candidates that are established anyway, but the requirement allows people who are less established. Because technically, how long is the CTIP program?
Two years to clear.
So that's a three-year minimum to become a CTIP mentor, right? And I think it would be behoove to have more experience behind those mentors.
And we totally agree. So for our hiring process internally and that we agree within our consortium, meaning Culver City and ourselves, we actually do a pre-screen. We do a pre-training. So we hosted two events after school in early August to have those that were interested in the mentoring process basically come and participate with us in the training to be able to see, very interactive, what would you do in a coaching model, a three-way coaching model, how would you handle this certain situation? And then from there, then the application process started, and then principals as well screened those candidates. So those that we bring forth each year have gone through almost a three-part screener before even becoming a recommendation for a mentor for our program. We look at personalities, too. We want to make sure that they're a good match and closely aligned to grade, if not exact, content and grade levels.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know a little more. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we're moving on to C, so I'll make a motion for the renewal of the Zoom contract.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I requested for this item to be pulled. I'm trying to scrimp and save where we can. I know that we use Zoom for these meetings, but I'm wondering, are we using them for any other meetings? And maybe the answer is yes.
We do. I mean, you'd be surprised, just after COVID, how this has allowed such an opportunity for our families that are working and some people that can't join. Even a parent conference now has become easier and more convenient for parents. We use it every day across the district.
Thank you.
I wanted to add to that. There's a lot of districts that, you know, were using Zoom heavily during the pandemic and then when they stopped paying for the license, they started using Google Meets. And while it was a transition, I mean, I find Google Meets to be just, I mean, it's not as fancy, I guess, as Zoom, but I mean, it doesn't, there's no time limit.
Yeah, it gets the job done.
It gets the job done. It also has a scheduler. So I don't, I just wanted to put that out there. What do you guys think about Google Meets? Because that's free, I think.
Right. We actually started with Google Meets before we even went to Zoom, and it was really problematic for, I mean, if we were using it just internally with each other, we were fine with it, but with COVID, we realized that there are, there's a lot of restrictions. It was more difficult for families that didn't have the right configurations on their computers. And so we went with Zoom because it seemed to be the one area where everybody seemed to have accessibility to it. But we tried that in the past and it just, it didn't seem to work out well. Not everybody was able to use it successfully.
That sounds probable because internally at Glendale, yeah, we use Google Meets, but if I'm meeting with another, you know, school or something, they usually send me a Zoom. It doesn't matter if I have Zoom, but it seems to universally, you know, offer that.
Right. For example, we have a lot of meetings with the city. The city does not use Google Meets. And so when we were having those meetings, it was problematic. If we were hosting the meeting and then we'd wind up, we'd say, let's just go to Zoom.
And, sorry if I may, yeah, I believe that Zoom is a lot easier for students and everyone because during the pandemic, everyone adjusted to Zoom, so they know the whole situation. And Google Meets is a little more complicated. You could say advanced, but it's just, it's, yeah, more complicated to run. And I know K-Bev might also have problems because they're so used to Zoom and like with their board meetings, we run it through Zoom also for us sharing our screens and everything. So, yeah.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a motion for item G, the Ratification of Purchase Order, report number four.
I opened the...
You need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I didn't get to...
Sorry, you're discussing. Okay, go ahead.
I noticed this on the purchase order and thought a little bit about it and I wondered... why were we paying for a membership to a, a member of the staff that's not the superintendent or one of our assistant superintendents? And I remember several months ago, this subject came up, and I raised the question that I didn't think that we should be paying for everybody carte blanche to get their certification or to get membership in the, and it was a lot of money. As I recall, at that point, it was over thirty thousand dollars. So I asked for the information on this and found out that this is for the assistant in the business services office to get her involved and have a membership. And I have no, and it was off, I was brought to Mr. Guzman, asked that she be given this membership, but I feel that this was something that we had opined on originally, and now it was being, we were being pipassed on it, and I took a little offense to that. And if Mr. Guzman was here, I would say the same thing. I think it should have been brought to us, because this was not one of the ones that we would normally have approved. I'm not going to say anything more about it. It's an over and done deal, I guess, but I just wanted to opine on my feelings about it, and so that going forward, we don't do that again.
Yeah. The original proposal was for the entire leadership team, and so with the departure of Mr. Guzman and having somebody in his department as the new director to step up and also take the lead in that position, this is somebody that is going to be attending a variety of trainings as the new director. And so it would be more expensive to have her attend all of the trainings that are in place than it is just for this membership fee. We'd be happy to do that, but at the end of the day, we would show you at the end of the year that we would spend more money signing her up for trainings.
I'm not going to, I'm just saying, that would have been nice if we had known that, so that we could have just said, well, I wouldn't have raised a question about it. And I think that's the only thing that I was concerned about, is that it was something, I would not have objected if it hadn't been explained that, but it was like, I don't want this to be a habit going forward with other district members. That's the point I was making.
Understand.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I'll make a motion for the approval to declare obsolete furniture. That's item H.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I just didn't see any attachment which described what furniture is being deemed obsolete. I don't have a problem with it in theory, but are we sure that we want to do this at this point? Maybe the furniture can be used at a future time. For example, if the city wants to use more rooms for preschool classes or parent-in-me classes. And so I know that you want to clean out some of the rooms, but are we sure with considering how much space there is, we don't want to just use some of the rooms for storage and see if we might need these? Because we ended up, in the move to El Rodeo, at the end of the day, spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on cabinets and so on and so forth, which I think we did a good job, and it's beautiful, fresh, new, and consistent. I'm just not sure if I'm ready to discard these items.
So that's a great question, and so, and a lot of those items were not moved because they were in such bad shape. There are items that are in such bad shape that we couldn't even donate them if we tried. There isn't anybody that would want them. They're in such bad shape. If you have been in the parking garage of Horace Mann Elementary, you will know that we are trying to keep as many good things as we can. We don't want to have to repay for items, and so we have probably more than we should that's stored. But as for storage at Hawthorne, we do have some room for some storage. And so it'll be going through piece by piece in keeping items that the city may want to use for their preschool or an early childhood center. They pretty much have what they need. But there'll be some rooms that have some storage that we know that there's a place. We're not going to get rid of anything that we're just going to turn around and pay for again. So we do have the space. We're going to be very selective in using that space, but we also don't want to create a fire hazard either with some of the information, some of the materials and some of the furniture is, some of it's forty, fifty years old.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it for the consent calendar. Moving along to Student Board Member Report.
I'm just sharing my screen. Waiting for K-Bev.
There we go.
So the Student Board Member Report for September tenth. We first had, we had our first football game, which was on August thirtieth, 2024, of course, and the BHHS football team kicked off an incredible start to the season. We secured the victory in our first game, twenty-six to twenty-one, where the players showed great skill and teamwork, and the team elevated their performance tremendously and are positively representing our school. It was a great way to begin the season and set high standards for all their future games, which I know they just won their last game, so our record is undefeated, undefeated as two zero. And these, thanks, thank you for Rebecca, Ms. Starkins, for taking these photos for us. We also had back-to-school night, and it was a great success with everything running smoothly. Parents had the opportunity to meet teachers, explore the curriculum, and get a feel for the upcoming school year. This positive atmosphere and well-organized schedule made it a wonderful experience for everyone. Culinary, of course, cooked their delicious food, and ASP helped tremendously with guiding the parents to the correct class. As you can see, here are some more pictures of culinary, culinary up here, the, some of the, not school clubs, but the programs we have at our school, like Team BHEF. And this is just a science experiment in the chemistry class that one of the teachers put on for the, for the parents. And we had our mascot representing there as well. Homecoming has been announced, and the theme is going to be Candyland at Candelabrea. This time, homecoming is usually at a, at our tennis courts, but this time it's going to be out of venue. And here are some pictures for you guys to see how the venue looks like. I believe it's like a beautiful venue. It looks very nice, and we're all excited that this year it's going to be out of venue, and many people are looking forward to it. Middle School Night is this Friday, September thirteenth, and it's an annual BVMS night on the football field. It's in celebration of Norman Day, BVMS students are encouraged to wear orange and black at school throughout the day. Additionally, all of the BVMS students are invited to attend the evening football game, where the BHHS Normans will face off against Pasadena Polytechnic, Polytechnic High School. Club Rush also started at BVMS, and this is which students will have opportunities to browse and learn about the new offerings. This year, students will have an opportunity to select from a variety of clubs that range from clubs such as improv, tech experts, mock trial, Jewish heritage, Spanish heritage, jazz, and color guard, just to name a few. And they also had a commencement of BVMS sports. So last week, students at BVMS started tryouts for the fall sports. Currently, they have over forty athletes competing in girls volleyball and thirty in cross country. In football, they're averaging between forty and fifty athletes for each grade level. So you can tell it's a very, very high demand for these sports. Everyone's really enjoying it and loving it. At El Rodeo Elementary, they had some themed day, spirit days, which was pajama-rama day, where they did fun activities while everyone was dressed, were encouraged to dress into, in their pajamas and come to school. The next was Walk to School Wednesday, which many, many parents were involved with, and everyone who lived by, even some people who live far were still able to wake up early and walk to school with their children. And they also had, they're learning the singing of the El Rodeo Alma mater, again, transitioning from the Hawthorne Alma mater, and they also had an author visit from Jessie Bina for the kinder and first grade. At Horace Mann, they have lunchtime activities that provide students with structured and supervised activities during their recess. It ranges from chess, Legos, other, like gym, gym or like yoga, people can enjoy during lunch if they don't have, they're not used to doing other stuff, they're not as socially interactive. They have other things to do that will make them enjoy their time at school. In addition, the Husky Fifth Grade Ambassador Club is a committee of fifth-grade students that forms a welcoming committee for students when they enter the campus on Friday mornings. Many of the students and parents love it. As you can see here in the video, it's lagging on the screen, but as the younger students walk by, the almost graduating fifth graders are waving at to them and encouraging them, and it just makes it feel like home when they're walking into the school or out. In addition, the service learning class is running a supply drive where students can purchase items off the Amazon wishlist for the BHHS Special Education Program. All items will go toward brightening the days of our students, of the students on our campus. And like the Norman Aid Wellness Center already mentioned, they had today, all ninth graders attended a special assembly hosted by Norman Aid. The event provided important information to help students navigate high school while focusing on mental health and well-being. Peer counselors introduced the SOS, Signs of Suicide Program, sharing valuable insights on recognizing signs of distress and supporting those in need. Club Rush also took place at, or is going to take place at our school this Friday. And like I said, it's an exciting event where students have the opportunity to explore and join various clubs offered at BHHS. It's held on the third floor patio during lunch on Thursday, and it features tables hosted by different clubs, allowing students to meet club members, learn about their activities, and find a club that matches their interest. It's a great chance for students, the students to get involved in the school community and discover new passions. And I believe we have around seventy-nine clubs that registered. Amazing for our students. And that's all for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Very comprehensive. Mr. Margot?
I got nothing. I know everything going on. If I was a student, I would feel I'm not missing any information. And I mean a student at any school. And I'm digging the yoga at Horace Mann. That's lunchtime?
Yeah, it's at lunchtime.
All right, I'm going to do that.
All right.
Remi, you are a great representative, and thank you for being on this board with us.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Margot, I'm going to use my favorite word. It's a very comprehensive report. It was fabulous. And you really outdid yourself today by highlighting so many activities that are going on all around our school district. I don't know how our kids can't be enjoying their school days, because it's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nothing further to add, but I really enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
It's really an exciting time of the year, is the beginning of the year, and there is, as you've just articulated, when you have over eighty different opportunities for students to be not only involved, but to also take a leadership responsibility within a club is unheard of in many school districts. But I really like just listening to the articulation of opportunities from our elementary schools to our high schools and the level of involvement, including some of the new programs that you reported about, which is providing opportunities even for our elementary students that are, that are during lunch, during the lunchtimes to get involved. So excellent job.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Superintendent Report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Stern. Just a short report for you this evening. As I normally start out, just with recognitions and acknowledgements, tomorrow is Patriot Day, also the remembrance of nine eleven, and so there are many events that are going on. I know that there are several classrooms that are utilizing their curriculum to share information and ideas with nine eleven, with our students in a variety of ways. The city is also putting on a really nice commemorative and recognition ceremony, and that will be tomorrow in front of the fire department at five thirty PM, and they do a really nice job there. And hopefully, people will come out if they are available and help recognize and remember our victims from nine eleven. As Dr. Stern had a moment of silence in the beginning of the meeting, I also wanted just to give my heartfelt condolences to the victims of yet another senseless school shooting, two of them, and want to reach out to families of the victims, but also just to our staff. You know, are the unsung heroes many times are the people that are on the front lines in our classrooms, and that is our teachers and our administrators, and I don't want to forget about their heroic efforts that often seem as it's being passed over when we simply move from one event to another. And there's been so many that sometimes we don't remember the state or the city or when it is. And we can't stop with stopping and remembering and recognizing and sharing this information of what to do in a crisis situation. I am very confident in the area of safety for our school district under the direction and leadership of Mr. Mead and staff. And so I've recently put out to staff just a reminder to, and also to our parents, about what you can expect during a crisis situation. We learn from every episode, every situation that happens is not just a check the box and that's unfortunate. These are situations where we actually take the time, we work with law officials to learn about what happened, the behind-the-scenes. Many times, law enforcement will share with school officials about what happened, how things were handled well, how things could be improved, and they share these practices with school districts every single time there is a crisis. And we do take every opportunity to learn from schools that have to go through this situation. And so we will do that as well with these unfortunate events that have just occurred. But also, if you haven't had a chance, this is something to review, and it's in a Q and A format as well, so that you can get a better understanding of what you can expect from us if there's a crisis situation happening in our school district. There have been a few concerns about food services, and so I have taken some time to, really well worth it time in our schools to learn about our food services program, the operations of our food service, some taste testing going on with Ms. Kabor at El Rodeo Elementary, and just looking at the structures and supports that are within our food services program to get a better understanding of how things are working from an operational level, the selection of food that's available, under the direction of Dr. Horvath and our Wellness Committee and two of our board members. This is an ongoing, active community that is engaged in our food services. We've seen a lot of change in food service over the years, and so I'm really proud of this committee, and we will be reconvening, reconvening very soon to review some of those accomplishments and areas where we still need to make some improvement, because it's not perfect yet. But our students deserve to have a program where they feel as if there's enough healthy choices for them, that they're comfortable, and also for our parents. And so I've spent some great deal of time in our lunchrooms, talking to our students and our staff, and look forward to meeting with our Wellness Committee next week to take a deeper dive into where we've been in food services and where we can improve. I had the opportunity to do a prerecorded session. This is for, this is a yearly national summit on K-12 school safety and security. It's hosted by the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. They are doing a conference next week. They did a prerecorded activity, and they selected some leaders across the country to participate, and I was selected to be in this session and represent BHUSD, and I was proud to do that. This is, kind of goes right in line with what we've been doing as a community. Just recently, last week, our mayor, Les Friedman, who has a program that a program that he does for the community that he calls Less is More. And uh his topic for this last session was on the dangers of social media. And so, as you know, our parent universities over the last couple of years have had a similar topic nature as well. Um, and we as well will be joining this line of topics uh through our Student Services Department under the leadership of Mrs. Collins Williams. Uh, additional guest speakers, experts in the area of social media and the dangers. And I want to thank the board for being proactive last year in their um their efforts to to change our cellphone policy and make it more aggressive uh for student use during the day. Uh, and I think that that has really helped. The area where we really need some assistance is at home and with parents and and this continues to be. Uh, you know, for some people that are hearing me say this, it's like again, you're having something similar again, you know, the the mayor's having uh dangers in social media. And the reason we're doing that is because we we have to continue this work. Our kids, some of our kids are placing themselves in harm's way. Uh, at this evening with the mayor last week, one of the panelists had a son that was involved in some social media dangers on Snapchat where they were uh in in a social media thread that uh provided um drugs through the social media for fentanyl that was placed into a drug that the student had delivered at their home while the parents were sleeping. And so the dangers are real and it's scary and it's it's not to frighten you, but to to a wake-up call for our our parents and our students to realize uh the unintended consequences of getting too far into social media. And um i- in really thinking a relationship or someone that you can trust may not even be the person that you're corresponding with. Um, there are stories after stories about how kids have gotten too far into these conversations and they can't get out of them or they've they've built relationships with some people that are outside of their friend group that their parents know and um and then can't seem to get out of that without something unfortunate happening. And so we're gonna continue this year and this is gonna be something that you're gonna hear about over and over again. Um, there are, just when you think that you you've you've gotten the word out about a certain area, then there's a new area like sex extortion and that's happening in our own community and our own police department is uh is is warning that our own kids are involved in in scandals where pictures are being distributed and then being held for ransom. And um our own students are being pulled into these conversations and they're sharing pictures and information, our own students. And so we're working closely with our police department to help um notify parents. Um, but it's just when you think that you are getting into a safer area, there are new things that are being reported uh where kids are being uh involved and there's some decision-making that has been made that um has placed our our students in a really difficult position. So uh it's gonna be ongoing and I really wish and hope that we have higher attendance this this year because it's becoming more invasive in what's happening. And um we had record number of attendance, um and I want to thank Mrs. Marcus for being part of the work that we're doing with the commissions in Beverly Hills. This was the highest attended event with the city and I want to thank our school district for coming out and also supporting. We have parents that were on the panel as well. Um, and it just shows that the more that we're involved, the more that we contribute, the more knowledge we have about those potential dangers will benefit us in the long run. We have some great work that we're doing in our strategic plan. Um, it, our work is cut out for us. I think that the work that has been placed in front of the board and in front of our staff, uh, we've got work to do. And while we've celebrated some small improvements and some some small gains, we know the areas that we have to improve upon. Um, that is clearly laid out in our strategic plan. Uh, we have, we have reorganized the way that we have our leadership meetings with all of the administration, just like the leadership has changed a lot that's happening in our school site meetings and their meetings with individual teachers. We've been data-rich for a long time. We we know the data is out there. But it's just an opinion unless you're able to get to the bottom of the data, understand what drives the data and what influences the data. And that all starts and happens with the magic of our classrooms and through the work and guidance and leadership of our administration and also to our Board of Education. So it's ongoing work. It's the highlight of the work that we're doing now. It's the work that has been prioritized by our school district as far as the improvement that's necessary. And I would venture to say that this is the most dialed in that we have ever been with the student achievement results that's happening in our school district. And um I look forward to following a timeline that's placed in front of you um as we continue this work and we look forward to reporting out to you transparently uh the results that we have. Remy had already talked about football, but it's, you know, I'm so pleased with the coverage that we're getting as a community. Uh, because it really goes further outside of our just school community, the success that we're having in our athletic programs in middle school and in high school, but it's when our own community and the media is also recognizing for a a large percentage of our community that isn't aware that we're winning football games and that there is success happening at our high school. And it, there's a great vibe um that's happening and having the two wins, the the two home games uh has been very exciting uh to be there and to see everybody come out. I can't describe it any other way other than there is an incredible vibe that's out there and people are really proud to be there and then cheer on our teams. On this Sunday, we are having a a second uh event, um and this is under the direction leadership of Dr. Seaman and our Education Services Department, um along with our Human Relations Commission with the city. Uh, and this is an opportunity where as a city, uh we are reading, uh we we're the lucky ones and um this is an opportunity for us to engage with the author this Sunday at El Rodeo in our beautiful auditorium there. Um, uh, this is our our second event. Uh, we know that we're gonna have high numbers there. Um, and it's exciting to see the school district and the city um not only working together, but also learning together and experiencing um this opportunity together as a complete city. So we hope to see you there. And that is my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, comments, Remy?
Thank you for such a wonderful wonderful report and everything you went over. Um, and yeah, I love how the newspaper even shouted out our team and you're right, it is just a vibe you have to like to all the parents, everyone watching like the next home game, I feel like everyone has to come, especially our homecoming game. That would be a great one. I know everyone will be excited. All the fans will be cheering on and hopefully we'll win that too. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burie. All good.
Thank you.
I just want to make one mention about the uh event at the City Hall with Less is More. I was involved in that and I really was very impressed with the turnout and the uh online, I mean Zoom people, the people that came in, speaking of Zoom. Uh, it was really very well attended and I I really thought that the four, the the narrator was wonderful, but the story about the gentleman who lost his son was very poignant and I'm hoping that we can bring him to tell his story here at the school because that was a real, a real horrible thing that happened. So thank you for the report, Dr. Burie.
Yes, thank you. I also was happy that I joined the Less is More, uh very interesting and and mind-blowing. Um, that there are certain, Snapchat I think was one that is actually headquartered in Santa Monica. I didn't know that, so. They're close. Um, uh, and also I know we had discussed perhaps a, you know, joining in on on being part of the litigation um against some of these big companies that are are being, are don't have the guardrails um when they are dealing with some of our youngest residents and that they really should be in check. And I know that that's something that um that we have discussed, but thank you for bringing that to our attention as well as the the safety matters, as you know, near and dear to my heart, um concerns from outside, concerns from inside in terms of our safety and um I'm glad that we have our pulse on that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that.
With that, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five dash zero four regarding release from temporary certificated position.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll make an approval of the Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five dash zero zero three in support of Proposition Two, Kindergarten Through Grade Twelve Schools and Local Community College Public Education Facilities Modernization, Repair and Safety Bond Act of twenty twenty-four.
I will second the motion.
Can I, is there anybody to, Will, are you on this one? Thank you. Um, so I was reading um some of the FAQs and the bond language that was attached to the agenda and just reviewing it. Before the item came up today and I I did get clarification on the fact that this is not an increase in taxes. So I think that's important for people to understand, but what I wanted under, what I want to understand since it still is coming out of state revenue, which is taxes. Um, is there opportunities for our district to uh get our hands on some of this funding? Or is this because some of the language also made it look like maybe not?
Yeah, I can see where you see that because it referenced a lot of uh lower income districts in the language. Um, but this will allow us to be able to take advantage of more of the grants and um the state match funding that we've been waiting on. So it's going to increase our chances of getting that state match uh funding that we kind of are hoping for or accounting for, which is upwards of like twenty million dollars. If it doesn't get approved, it will still be eligible, but we may not receive as much funding. It just would.
Is it, is that part of the funding that we've already applied for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that that is. I'm glad you brought the point about our taxes will not be increased.
Yeah, I think it's important. I think this one is important because we know that we're at a minor shortfall at the end of the project. And if this does pass, it might help fill that gap, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Judy, did you wanna? Yeah, I I am, I read up on it and I went to the voter guide dot S O S dot C A dot gov. And my interpretation is that it's not being presented as um a tax, but it's a bond. And the bond means that there will be revenue raised and when revenue is raised, it comes from the taxpayer one way or another. And so, yes, I love free money. Um, especially because I know that we're gonna have a shortfall of somewhere between six and thirteen million dollars coming up in the not-too-distant future. Um, but personally, I won't, I I'm not gonna vote for it because I believe that the people, uh, the taxpayer in Beverly Hills have already paid their fair share toward our uh various measures. And um we should next time do a better job of using them more responsibly so we have enough funds left. And so I don't believe that it's a good idea for my constituents, the people that I was elected to represent. I know I spoke with neighbors, friends and so on, and they really don't want to now um be liable to fund a bond that is probably gonna help everybody else in California more than it's gonna help us. I think we've already done our part in raising our funds and I still see our bond on my property tax bill. And so it's still something that um is on my back and is on everybody else's back in Beverly Hills, so.
Yeah, I just wanna.
So I, and and Judy, if it was anything that would raise our taxes, I would a hundred percent agree with you. Um, but in the language, it specifically states that there is no tax increase for this at all and the principal and the interest are being paid from existing state revenue sources that already, they have the money already. It says it's basically telling the state how to spend the money. It's directing the state how to spend the money they already have.
I I appreciate that.
The risk in not voting for it is creating a larger shortfall for us at the end of our project. So that's that that to me is a risk that overrides.
Yes.
Um, the other issue.
I hear you, um, but I am more in favor of living within our means. And I understand that, you know, um, it might have a negative impact on us in some way, but I got my information from the voter guide, from the general election voter guide from the state of California. And it is clear that it means that the state is gonna borrow ten billion dollars. And then that ten billion dollars will have to be repaid and the people who will repay it one way or another will be the taxpayer. And we've already raised our bonds. We're 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 past this phase. And so as a representative of Beverly Hills and a trustee for my neighbors and my family and my cousins and my friends, it's not something I'm gonna support.
Right, and and just just and and I completely respect that and I'm not, I'm not definitely um saying that the state knows how to spend its money.
But hold on, just to speak to you con, Proposition Two will increase our bond obligations by ten billion, which will cost taxpayers an estimated eighteen billion when repaid with interest.
Right, but it's not raising the taxes. They're just getting it.
I didn't say that it's raising taxes, but eventually this will be a tax on all of us.
It would have eventually been a tax anyways. It would have just came out of, from a different source. Basically, they're reapportioning the amount they would have borrowed.
I think the important, for me, the the driving factor is one thing. If we don't get the additional assistance from the state, it's coming out of the general fund. Okay, and therefore comes out of the classroom. That's what drives me to support something like this, knowing, one, it will not raise my taxes. Yes, it's taxpayer money, but it's always taxpayer money. That's what runs the state. And two, it will reduce the amount of general fund obligation we put on ourselves at the end of this project.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, um, Ms. Marcus?
Well, I, this is a uh problem for uh myself because I'm hearing two sides and I would like to think that maybe we could defer the vote on this and perhaps come bring it back in two weeks after we've all had a chance to really understand whether it's going to affect our taxes or not because right now we are hearing two sides and I think it would be wise perhaps to defer this and come back to it in two weeks when we meet again. I think the election isn't tomorrow. We have time to do it. It's not like that we've got a gun to our head. So I would suggest that we not vote on it or we, whatever you, however we want to do it and bring it back in two weeks.
Yeah, but I would just recommend looking at the fact sheet that we provided and the FAQs. And also just as a side note, um CASBO, CSBA, and cash and other state agencies are all are all in support of this, but I understand the other.
I have a feeling I'm not sure which to believe. That's my concern.
I I would also say, because I I think that's a really great suggestion, that uh we bring this back. But if you have additional questions, specific questions on on how it impacts us, to please just ask us and then we'll provide you with that information, just so that at the end of the day, you can make um, you know, a determination that's that you have all of the information.
Right.
Um, I think that's a good plan, Ms. Marcus, um to defer this for.
I don't know, we just, uh, I won't vote. I will, I think I'd pass it if I don't vote.
You can withdraw your motion, Mandy. You said you made the motion. You can withdraw.
I made the motion.
So I'll make a motion to.
Did I second it? I'll withdraw my second.
So withdraw and you are.
I'm drawing my second.
Yeah, alright. We'll make sure to bump that forward to the next meeting. Uh, planning and facilities.
Alright, I'll make a motion for item A, the approval of the agreement with TLS Choice for the restroom ADA upgrades at Horseman.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Wait, one question.
Wait, 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 wait. I know that Horseman was a school that was remodeled just before, it was finished before I came on the school board. And it's not that many years ago. Why are we having to do upgrades now at a school that has only been finished, let's say, in the last? Seven years? What are the upgrades about?
Well, the upgrade I think you're referring to is probably building B. Uh, the shade structures that we installed, they're all adjacent to building A. And what DSA does is when they review our plans for a shade structure, they have the authority. I guess you could call it, to. Enforce that we bring up all of our restrooms or any ADA accessible classroom, restroom, parking lot, up to this current standard. So, when building A probably was remodeled, I think that was back in the two thousand twelve building code. And we had to upgrade this one restroom. They, they don't look at the entire building, they just pick one or two things to add to a project every time we submit one.
So, Will, so basically, the shade structure triggered the restrooms and the ramps?
It's part of the shade structure at DSA plants.
Okay, did we know that going in, that it might trigger?
We don't know what DSA is going to try to attach to the project ahead of time. We, we submit the drawings for the shade structure. They review it, provide comments, and then ask for, you know, an ASB of our classrooms or restrooms. And then they make the suggestion or the requirement.
Which is why the state shouldn't be, they should be supplying the funds for these upgrades, as opposed to making us have to chase them and apply for them.
Through a bond.
That's, that's, yes. That's, that's very disturbing. State, if you're listening to me? No bueno.
They do that on all, they do that on all projects, too, not just shade structures.
I know, but, but a shade structure is very, I, I would understand if we were doing interior work. Near those restrooms and all of that stuff, I completely get it. But for an outdoor shade structure to trigger an indoor restroom. They're just looking for the extra handout. And that's, that's, as a, as a public school district, that is not the way to operate with public schools. That is just, they're, they're using public funds to drive their agenda. They know those restrooms are relatively new. But because they can, they can change the code every six months if they want, and then point out, hey, you're not up to code now. It's not right.
I agree. I'm sorry, but I agree.
I wait, wait, listen, that's the sound of it falling on deaf ears. There you go.
I went through the same thing this summer with a client who wanted to put in a shade structure. And then, the city actually, it triggered them to make them spend a lot of money on ADA ramp and so on. So unfortunately, that's how it goes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carries.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with TLS Choice for the ADA parking lot improvements at Horseman.
Can I ask what the parking lot structure is?
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so this was another one that they reviewed our. Facilities, and even though building B, and this parking structure is part of building B, was recently. Completed, it was completed during the two thousand twelve building code. So the ADA parking spaces were not up to our current code. Title twenty-four. So the work that we need to do is increase the truncated domes. Those are those yellow, kinda like raised. Areas you see around an ADA stall. And we also have to restripe and.
Are you trying within the parking structure down the bounder?
Yeah. We have five or six ADA parking spots there.
And are you able to use developer fees for ADA compliance in general?
Yeah. Well, this is all attached to that project.
And the, and with the restrooms?
Yep.
Well, that's great. It's a good use of those dollars.
Wait, Judy, don't say it's great. We're so upset about it.
No, I know. It's the lesser of two evils.
Well, it's kinda like, yeah, I will keep my comments.
Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll call for the approval, make a motion for the approval of document scanning, digitizing, and indexing for the construction. And facilities departments' construction blueprints with A R C Repro graphics utilizing C M A S.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I say something about that one? I think that in reading this, there was a statement about the fact that. Some of the materials that were from the previous contractor seems to have disappeared. Is that my understanding of that?
Um, not entirely disappeared, but we've been trying to work with the scans that have been done previously. We found the scans are not legible most of the time. There was a poor quality, and I think at the time, they were scanned in two thousand and eleven. Uh, so I think the technology has increased since then. But also, we found that not all projects, not all of our old plans that are in our storage container at the upper field are in that. On that online database. So, we wanna do this all, get all of our plans archived, scanned, and readable. One time here, so that we actually, what we have to do is get, take that container that is in the upper field, and we have to move it. So we wanna do this all now while we have the chance.
How were the other bids by comparison? You know, I mean.
Uh, this was done through C Mass, so it's a California multiple award schedule. It's already been pre-bid throughout the state. And we're using, taking advantage of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for the approval of, we, we took the vote on that, right?
No, we didn't.
Oh, I thought we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion for the approval of Amendment five to the agreement with environmental audit for consulting services.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion for the approval of the agreement for the soccer field netting with the Nazarian group at El Rodeo Elementary School.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Soccer ball shall be saved.
Yes.
Cards, yeah.
Cards.
Actually, that's a good point.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to professional and official business.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the strategic plan twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Can we discuss for a minute?
Sure.
I, I just wanna speak to the academic component.
Sorry, I just wanna speak to the academic component. And I am not speaking to all of the amazing things that have been and continue to be going on. I just wanna talk about the scores a little bit. And my concern with this draft. Is the following. Last year, when you presented the strategic plan, it was my second year with all of you up here. And I remember specifically, I said, what I love about this strategic plan is that it is not a two point oh of the prior year. It was really a very fresh and thoughtful and moving in, in the next direction document. What I, what I was not pleased about. Is that the good news is that the iReady is a good indicator of how the students are scoring. And we were told that that would be the case. So I would say that's a success that we are now implementing the iReady. But what I was really surprised about last year is that there were, and I'll just take the elementary school level. And I'm not even gonna talk about El Rodeo, because I have a student at El Rodeo, and this does not reflect. How I think about any of my students or any of my students' teachers. I'm just gonna talk about Horseman for a minute. To keep it clean. At Horseman, thirty-six percent of our students were not. Meeting grade level math standards. And this diagnostic information and this data belongs to all of us. And it was not shared with us. And that's what.
Where are you seeing thirty-six percent? I'm looking here, it says fourteen percent not met.
Well, if I'm understanding, when I look at Horseman. And I look at the schoolwide CASP data, and please, anybody correct me if I'm wrong. I'm happy to be wrong. But in math, in twenty-one to sixty-five percent. Met or exceeded grade level. In twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, sixty-four percent did. And then last year, with all the tracking and the data collection, sixty-four percent men, met. Um, or exceeded. And so, the way I'm calculating it is that means that thirty-six percent didn't. And when these results were shared with us, I was floored. That it was the first I was hearing about it. And so, that's the biggest problem that I have with the current strategic plan. Is that I incorrectly assumed that the data would be communicated. Shared, and then as a partnership. Teachers and parents could come together and work on the kids, and work with the kids. So, here we are. The scores, and I'm again gonna speak about Horseman as an example. Are not where we want them to be. With the data. With the silver bullet that we were told was gonna happen, it didn't happen. We're actually going in the wrong di- direction, so there is some deterioration, some decline. In the scoring. And again, I'm not speaking about the football wins, I'm not speaking about the fashion, I'm not speaking about. The plethora of, of amazing things wherein many and many of our students are thriving. I'm speaking about the academics only. So, I do see that there is progress monitoring, and that is, if I'm correct. Some of, some of the verbiage under, there's action items, and then there's progress monitoring. The progress monitoring is a little bit beefed up as compared to last year, but not that much. There is no how. And there is no transparency, communication, and at-home partnership component. And, I'm gonna say it in another way. I grew up in this school district. My mom did not speak English, and my teachers were everything to me, and my teachers were everything to my parents. And still, to this day, my mom does not even have a checkbook. I am like your stereotypical immigrant child. And everything that I say is said with respect to our teachers and with respect to our staff. But there is a missing component here, and that is the communication and the partnership at home. And, we disagree on some philosophies, but all of the philosophies agree on one thing. And that is that it is very important for families to make their. Academic expectations apparent to their children. And they cannot do it unless they know how their kids are doing and what's going on. And so, I, I gave you this feedback in the open session. And then I gave you this feedback in the feedback session. I don't know if it's that there was an instruction missing from the board. But I will respectfully say that I am not in a position to approve of the strategic plan. Unless this important integral effective component is added in. Please.
So if I understand what you're saying, you wanted some goal or a measure of transparency to parents? Is that what you're?
Yeah, like for example, the action items and the progress monitoring are generally on point. Even though we don't have any understanding of the how, fine, let's put that aside. So, on page three of Horseman's presentation, as one example. And I, and I really speak to the elementary school level, because to me, that's, it's much more finite. You know, when you move to the middle school and when you move to the high school, it's, it's a jungle out there, you know? But the elementary school is where the foundation lies and the relationships lie. And your student, for the most part, has one teacher, and that teacher knows everything about them. They know. Your student was on vacation, they know if parents are fighting at home, they know everything about the student. And so, somebody is getting an iReady diagnostic. Result, three times a year. And there is no mention that that result is gonna make its way home. And there is no mention that that result is gonna, is gonna ignite a conversation. Wherein the parents are pulled in to support the school day. Absolutely. Please, I always welcome you.
So I want to clarify two things real quick. One, January thirtieth. We did a quarter three update last year for that strategic plan. And in that presentation, if you go back. You can see our updated scores and progress towards iReady that we presented to you guys, and N W E A. In addition, I'm just, out of clarity, we also did a presentation, and I'm gonna kinda raise and show again. You can see the exact presentation.
Yeah.
Then again, for quarter four, where we came to the board again, to show you exactly where we fell. And you'll see, what we presented to you in the final is almost exactly how we ended up scoring for the CASP exams.
I trust you on the numbers.
Totally. So the measurements and the presentation and the transparency from the principals and the assessments. Have been monitored throughout the school year by the board. And the willingness of those parents that wanna be a partner in that process, all the study sessions are open, all the opportunities are there. For iReady, like you'd stated, that email comes directly from me. So you guys have received an email from me stating, hey, you now have a iReady report. Because I even have the emails coming back to me saying, oh, I don't know how to log in, because you have to have the student log in. Meaning, you, we want you and your student to sit at home and have that conversation. So, that email did come out, that communication three times last year, directly from me, saying, hey, here's, here's the iReady information. This is how you log in to be able to see it from N W E A all the way down to iReady. Just sharing that as a.
But how about, and what you should be doing at home is A, B, C, and D. Because I wanna tell you in another way.
Yeah.
As the students continue to fall behind, I don't know how the teachers will bring them up to par. When there is a cumulative deterioration. It only gets harder and harder and harder.
Hundred percent agree. But there is a mis-narrative out there. We grew in fourteen out of, uh, ten out of the fourteen areas. We also significantly grew in our AP and SAT scores.
Yes.
There is this narrative coming from some parents that is not correct. That we did increase academically, and we are closing some of the educational gaps. And we have to be very clear, because the data does not lie.
Yes, sir. And I don't wanna be reckless in what I'm saying. And so, I acknowledge that our SAT scores were good. I acknowledge our AP achievement was. Much better in the sense that there was a bigger piece of pie. So we had kids doing pretty consistently well. And more of them, more test-taking. And so, I do apologize if what I'm saying. Detracts from any of the successes. And it is not my intention at all to offend you or to undermine those successes. But, I do think that we need to have a little bit more communication. I will say, even me, that I'm so in tune, when I look at the, the reports. It doesn't really, it's hard for me to understand them. And I am like reviewing this information. I'm not gonna say as much as you are, but I am doing my part to understand these pieces. And I just wanna make sure that the communication and the partnership is there. I'm gonna say it to you in another way. I don't think that we can do this if we don't have an all-hands-on-deck approach.
I totally agree. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm taking the strategic plan out of our com, it feels like a one-on-one.
Yeah.
Um, I'm more around just making sure that the narrative is correct around our academic progress. In our actual monitoring progress as far as utilizing iReady and N W E A. So those scores directly aligned from quarter three to quarter four to CASP, to what we presented for the strategic plan. I do think that, taking the strategic plan out of the conversation, and actually what the Board of Education has power to do.
Yes.
And what we really, around that conversation, is around looking at some of our board policies. You know, I think that there is some question around the homework component. I think that's where we're going in this conversation. And I'd rather just.
I'm not going there now, because I don't wanna have that conversation with you right now.
No, no, no.
It's, it's a heated, intense topic.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's everything.
No, 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 but, but I do think that it is something that could be a piece of that conversation. You're, you're stating around, uh, just that partnership, bringing in, um, and transparency. And I think that's part of that, is having those conversations around board policy and study sessions, and inviting everybody to the table that wants to be able to. Have that conversation. I think there's not just that policy that could be. I think there's other policies that we. I think there's other policies that we identified during our strategic plan conversation. Around intervention, which is another piece, um, and.
Yes, and Dr. Seaman, um, we talked about a lot of things, I, I prepared because I wanted. I really respect the work and we talked about somehow the avid being taught. Let, let's be straight with each other, we identified that there is a disconnect in the transition between elementary school and middle school. I say that.
And middle school to high school sometimes.
Middle school to high school, I see that without pointing fingers to any side. It doesn't matter to me and I think it's everybody's responsibility and so. That, that's not here and it's important and it's not that I wanna micromanage you, but it's something that. If we don't address it today, in my opinion. We're, it's already, we're one month in, so we have a bunch of. Fifth graders now sixth graders who did not succeed, now they have seven classes. And are they being taught those skills, so we talked about maybe avid seeing its way into the advisory classes. We, these kind of things. I'm with you every step of the way, but I am a little surprised that there was no update. Now, if it's because you needed some kind of an instruction, I respect the way that the board works, but it was called a feedback session. It wasn't called a feedback and give us an instruction session, you know what I mean?
So, I, I'll step out of process cuz that's not who I am and why I'm standing here. Um, I think the, the feedback that was provided, uh, was mentioned in, we're coming to the board in November with this summer school presentation. If you remember, for those that don't know in the community, we have a summer school committee that runs. This is already our second meeting, even though summer school just ended. Uh, based off the current feedback of the current families that participated the summer from high school all the way down to elementary. Um, and we are working on bringing that proposal to expand, the expansion to identify and pick up more students. Even though I think I just gave you away my presentation, but that was so.
It's coming.
Well, but there's that piece, I think there's another piece, um, and I, and I don't know about process, I'm just saying from. A strategic plan piece, typically there hadn't been a summer school component listed in the previous strategic plans. That was always a separate pot of cash and a separate, uh, funding source and so, we've, I've always come to you. Typically, it would have been in the spring, but this year because we're trying to grow the program because we took it over last year. Um, we were wanting to come in November.
So, I, I, I'd like to add something, um, I'm, I'm listening closely Judy and. You're bringing a lot of the conversation, rightfully so, to how things in school are translating at home. From the onset of our strategic plan, one of the things that we were adamant about and, and this is going back many boards now when this whole thing started. Um, is that everything we do in the strategic plan has to be measurable. What's going on in the house unfortunately is not measurable, the results may be found when we see. Uh, parents that are very involved with their student success and are involved with their teachers, um, properly, not helicopter parents. And, um, we can see the results in students, we saw a few of them tonight being recognized, national merit scholars that. That the, these are families and, and homes that care about their student success and believe in our mission, right, educational excellence and that's part of it. Um, as opposed to just us kind of being a placeholder or babysitters or whatever for their students. So, I, I hear what you're saying, I just, the reason that component was never really put in a strategic plan before is because. We can't measure it and if we can't measure it and have data, we can't act on it and that was the whole. Um, impetus of the strategic plan is to compile data that would inform instruction. That's, that's why it was built in the first place, it branched out into other areas of our district to facilities and budget and, 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 um. Even, you know, uh, uh, connecting to the community, those things, but the, the core of it was supposed to be, how do we use the data? Um, and we even created more by having I ready, so we were able to move beyond the CASP. But how can we use the data to inform instruction, so, um, I agree that there, there should be. Uh, more action being taken at home and if you're saying that. Parents receive the I ready reports in elementary school, three times a year, they're getting the reports. Um, is there a way for them, do we know if they've signed off on it, do they, we know if they've read it, you know, that's. Those are questions like things that we can do, how many parents came to back to school night, right, what percentage of our students came to back to school night? Right, are a lot, but considering when you look at the percentage of parents or percentage of students that. How, are meeting or exceeding the standards, right? Is that, is that, is there a, uh, does that commensurate with the number of parents that are showing up to things at school, right? So let's say we have, you know, sixty, seventy percent of our students are meeting or exceeding standards, is that how many parents are showing up to events? It kind of starts telling you something, right, there's, there's, there's just an absence of the importance of education in too many of our homes. Right, so, so how do we engage that, we can, we can engage only so much on our end, we would love, we would love to.
There's a lot of uni- uh, parent universities, as they call it, and it, my understanding is very few show up. And some of the people who show up are those who already are aware of some of the issues that are, yes. And, and that is unfortunate because some of the people who really need these messages or some of the people who really need to show up to math night. Because they need to show their kid that yes, doesn't matter that you're a girl, you can do math and you could be really good at it, whatever, there, there's a lot of. Um, those parents who maybe they want.
But that's not necessarily relating to the academics, that's more social stuff. And you know, not everybody can leave three to four kids at six in the afternoon, but Rochelle, stop me if. I'm speaking about what you wanted to speak about, you know what I'm talking about, the comment that you made. I would like you to ask that question too, I don't wanna steal her thunder, but it's a comment that she had made in that meeting about the how.
Yeah, I, can I just get an, an idea of, um, like, because of course. The, the feedback, it, it's important to, to get that from the board and if there is something to, to add, this is. You know, this is our plan as a school district, what, what does that look like, just so that we can get a better understanding cuz we. We've, we've really drilled down to this accountability portion instead of, in the very beginning, we started making lists of. Like the data of who is attending conferences, you know, and who, who was there, like, it, it got really cumbersome, so. Is there, it, what does that look like, what, what's missing as far as your perspective of what does that look like in here?
I think what Judy was, um, Mrs. Manicherry was referring to was a comment that I had made. About the results that we get reported and I think you all agreed that my goal. Is the numbers, the actual numbers that we see, percentages don't mean much to me, I mean. How many students were not met, let's say, at the bottom, there were four, that's a number that I like to see. I, that I understand, there are four kids at that grade level that did not meet and there was. Seven kids that were barely met and all the rest are up above, those are the numbers that I would like to see go down. And that's my goal and the strategic plan, to say I'm gonna get three percent more means absolutely nothing.
But we are saying that in here.
I- in a way, but I like to see it more specific and, and, and one more thing I would like to say. And I'm, and I'm, I'm still befuddled by this concept altogether, so we give the kids the I ready test, correct? And they, that's supposed to show us how they're progressing, but when it came time to take the CASP tests. It didn't correlate that they were progressing, in other words, the scores didn't go up at, at one, more so at one school, that, I was bothered by that. The correlation between taking these tests and the kids really improving.
It's almost, it's almost spot on.
The data is right on.
Yeah, in the, but because they took the third assessment during, um, in May and then they took the.
CASP assessment and so it's almost spot on and again, last year you have to understand was our pilot year.
Why did, if it's spot on, all I'm saying, if it's spot on, which it was obviously. Why didn't the number of kids who meet and or exceed go up more and the ones at the bottom get less?
Yeah, no, no, meaning we did score higher in CASP than we did on I ready, I ready is actually more rigorous than the CASP exam.
The scores on our CASP don't show that.
You guys, I'm gonna pause for a second, you're arguing three different things, I think, is so, one, there is no magic pill, so tomorrow. Regardless of who's standing in this position or this seat, you're never gonna get to eighty percent overnight. It is an uphill battle, there are educational gaps that are very large, totally, and so. When we look at those numbers of students that did not meet or exceed, we. I can show you spreadsheets, we know every individual student, we know the claims that they did not tackle and we do encourage the parents. To have those individualized meetings with us, so we sometimes talk out of both sides of. Our mouth, I'm gonna say that, is that we set a structure around Carol DeWig, you know? Everyone's gonna grow, one, uh, one, uh, uh, one year's growth and one year's time. And we need a lot, utilize time for when families can come, so Zoom's a good example of why we need Zoom. Is to be able to have those conversations with parents and to have the town halls that we have around the academic performance, AP, we did it on a town hall. Uh, freshman orientation, we did that on a town hall. Um, but my long-winded way of getting here is then we start to remove some of our early release days. So we utilize in the elementary level, we have teacher-parent conferences and we removed some of those days to have those individual opportunities. Mid-year and at the end of quarter one to have those, let's go through hand, hand, hand in hand. Of where your kid is at because we do have the I ready diagnostic data already saying, we, we finished. Today, the middle school sat with N W E A and Dr. Sherman. And yesterday, administration sat with me to go through our growth data of N W A for our kids six through tenth grade. Um, and I ready will be then the following week and they're already doing, uh, Horseman's Up Burst. So we do have that data and what we're begging and I, what Dr. Buggy is saying is you, it's hard to monitor this individually, but. If your kid scored a two on the CASP exam, we are open door, I, I as the assistant soup will meet with you, let's sit and talk. And create an individualized plan, but to create a one plan fits all is where we struggle, is we say things like. Well, because ten percent didn't make it, a hundred percent have to do this, where ninety percent isn't showing up and talking to us right now. It's that ten percent that we have to have more time to do individual intervention, part of that's a board policy. Question that we may wanna have a study session around in the future, part of that is summer school that we definitely need to. Continue to beef up, but I don't know that those are line items in a strategic plan, I think those are.
It's kind of like, and, and the responsibility that we have it too, as far as looking individually, you know, we're sitting in data chats where we're going through. Individual students, what happened to this student, we're actually looking at some of the cohort data and we are looking at. Teacher accountability, we're looking to see, you know, what, what teachers, which areas, was there a new adoption in this area? Was there a teacher that was, um, you know, that we had a, a long-term sub, is there, like, there's, we're, we're really. Focusing, we're, we are doing the micromanaging on some of this data to find out what trends are there, is it a resource issue? Is it because there's some new teachers in this grade level, I mean, that, we're spending a great deal of time. Just trying to find where are those, those areas for improvement, um, let alone the, the individual students areas of improvement.
So then what, what happens now to your other point? The point is not homework, what happens when a parent emails us and says, I want more, I don't think my student is getting enough? That's a parent that their student is gonna become one of these national merit scholars, so. What is the response there, you know, where it's not, oh, but your teacher's doing enough, it's. Wha- how are you gonna respond to those parents, they're the ones that believe in the mission and the vision. And so how do we make sure that they know that there is a place for them here, is it that you respond to them and say, hey, um. Great, I'm so glad to hear that you wanna do more, I find that these quest books are on par or you know what I'm saying? I'm just speaking to that one.
But so an example is.
That you made.
Yeah, is, so, again, we, I'm gonna go back to our feedback session of, at the end of every summer, for those that have elementary folk. We, uh, ele- elementary students, we send out resources to all families, uh, that are grade level appropriate and specific. And even in the middle and highs, we send out opportunities for, uh, summer information that are different like UCLA engineering camps and stuff. That are offered outside of us just so parents have options and I get contacted all the time individually. You know, and so do the principals and the APs around specific because e- again, one size fits all is. Each individual student needs, each student deserves an individual conversation is my long-winded way of getting there, that's one piece to this puzzle. But the other pieces is there are a lot of resources that we can share if the family, uh, is gifted. Not just around, I didn't score, you know, a one or a two on the CASP exam, they scored a four consistently. And they need to be pushed.
Right, because.
I have a family coming in for that exact reason, is school fours across the board, now what?
And it's the difference between, you know, just more, doesn't mean just give more of the same. And so, it, I remember as a teacher, I would often be asked, uh, whether it's extension or challenge. And I, I don't know a teacher out there that wouldn't, wouldn't give that feedback back to. A parent and a student that these are areas that you can work on, uh, but just giving more or giving, you know, um, a workbook or. It, that, that doesn't necessarily going to, that's not going to improve their scores, it's really, it is individualized. So it isn't about just assigning more work, it's about what work is it for that particular student? And it's going to be different for most of the students in the class.
One thing you've just left, you also can ident- I'm not saying that homework should be whatever it is. But it's a one way that a teacher can identify a, a problem that the child is having with a certain mastery skill or something. By giving a certain amount, I'm not saying repetitive homework once, that, that's not the point. Have they got the skill, a couple of problems will indicate that they got it, like, two negatives make a positive and that they don't make that mistake. Or why did you make that, well, it's negative, I, you know, or how to reverse them, just that the teacher gets an indication. Of where the problem is, what is it that they're lacking and that's something that homework can do and I'm not advocating for.
Do you mean the parent gets an indication?
Well, so, and the parent and the teacher, the teacher gets that indication.
Remy had wanted to contribute something.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to add that, I know this time, I mean, this, it takes time and progress for everything to build up, the scores are not gonna just. Come one and done and all of a sudden, it's going to jump to everyone exceeding or meeting standards, so. It will take some time, I've seen like from my peers' experience about all of it, it does take some time, but also I know it's crucial that parents must be on top of it. And I like the idea Mr. Margot repres- uh, presented that. To, the parents can sign off that they did go over it, but I also like the idea how. Uh, there's an access code or like the student code and they have to get that from their students, their child as well, so it makes sure. That they are talking about it together and repetitive practice will. Uh, not always be the best benefit, but it does help them exceed in that one topic, then they can move on to the next without. Dropping that part that, um, they just improved on, like, studying for the SAT or ACT, it takes time. To study the parts that you're scoring less on and then you can move on to the next, so sometimes there's pros and cons about it, but I know it does take time and progress.
And one of the thing, I, I ready and a lot of computer adapted, um. Assessments, um, and I, I remember using these when I was a sixth grade teacher, I think it was called Star Math or something or Accelerated Reader. And it's interesting, the way it works is that it's, it's adaptive and it's a built-in mechanism, so if the, the student starts to fail. Or, or doesn't do right on three of them, it, you know, the algorithm scales it back and it starts giving out. Um, skills that are at that level and then it builds again and that is a very, uh, that adaptive feature is very helpful. I think that it can really, um, scaffold and look at the gaps of where a particular student is. Um, but separate from that, another comment I want to make is, um, looking at our, our five semifinalists who are here and I'm really pleased that. That there were four more than, than last year, um, I know one of them in particular very, very well and they're our neighbors and I'm. Know him so well that I'm gonna tease him when I see him, um, but he is a super bright and gifted kid. And I know after no, I've known them for about fifteen years or so, always been a very gifted, uh, a gifted kid and. They have always reached out to teachers to say, hey, you know, our, our son needs a little bit more. Um, and I have never felt that they were turned down for opportunities, whether it was, hey, he should try this. Or he's definitely gifted, he should, you know, do some of the gifted offerings, those things are out there, I do wish that more families would. Um, connect and try to find those opportunities because I do believe they're out there, um, I. I certainly didn't ask all the kids that were here, but I would guess that they're, they're juniors and seniors, that I would guess that they had a pretty rigorous education. That was differentiated towards their own learning and I am hard pressed to think that those kids sort of weren't. Did not, um, were not calibrated to their potential, I hope that's not the case, I know that's not the case for the family in question that I know quite well. I hope that's not the case. I know that's not the case for the family in question that I know quite well. So. Um, and then the other thing is that I know, um, we aren't there yet in terms of some of the achievement scores that we want to see. But I was, I was very pleased with, you know, when I look back at, at the El Rodeo scores. I know that like the fourth grade English language arts, um, 73% um, met or exceeded for 22, 23. And as of last year, that jumped to 81%. So again, Ms. Marcus, those aren't numbers of kids and those aren't scores, but the percentage did go up for that. I know that for math, um, for third grade, of course, it was COVID unfortunately for 21 and 22 and 22 and 23. But they took the math and 73% met or exceeded. Uh, the fourth grade at El Rodeo, it was 79% in 22, 23. That jumped to 89%. I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at these scores and while I still feel like, you know, for the amount of money we spend per pupil. We want to see a lot more, um, at the exceeded. I think we can expect that and I want that. Um, but the whole picture is not bleak and I feel like we are poised to make a really good, um, trajectory. Um, and the fact that we had, uh, an increase in the number of, of children opting for the advanced placement, um, courses and tests. Shows that there is a commitment and a culture to going beyond just the given. Because advanced placement is not just the regular class. It's like, hey, I want to, you know, really try out and, and get sort of a, you know, a stamp of approval. That I'm really like grade levels ahead and I want college credit for it. So the culture is moving in the right direction, but I think as Remy has said, um, as with behavior, as with, um, scoring. As with any Olympic sport, nothing happens overnight and the arc needs to go in the right direction. And that comes from leadership and it comes from, uh, good educators and infrastructure. We need to identify what is the parent piece? What is the transparency that's needed? What can we do to help, um, for those parents who, who want that and need more information?
And I don't disagree at all with the communication part of this, because I do think that like this is the most that we've ever talked about this transparently. Um, uh, about instruction and achievement, um, you know, in many years. But I, I do agree with you. I think that like we, we have this information, parents need to understand it. Parents need to be able to talk about it. And I know that even a lot of our students, I think it's, it's appropriate. For a lot of our students to understand where they're at. They should know where their, um, where their challenges are. Areas that they want to improve. I mean, we have students that, that actually understand that. And it shouldn't just be reported scores to them, uh, once a quarter or what. Students are competitive. They want to look to see where they're at. Um, and the more that we talk about it at a board level, we're also talking about it in our schools and in grade levels. And so this becomes, this should part of, be part of the dialogue with our parents and our teachers, just like it is with our staff and with our board. And it's not unrealistic that this becomes more of a conversation every day. So our parents understand what the scores are, understand where their kids fall. And the areas that they need some improvement in. So it, the more we talk about it. The more that we're going to be expecting people to talk about it at grade levels, PTAs, all of our organizations should be talking about this.
Yeah. And can I just to add one more piece of the puzzle for those that are at home or for those that are in the room? Part of it is that we calculate per percentages only because we have to submit that to the state based off the California dashboard. But I encourage everybody in the community to go to the California dashboard and look us up. You will see, because the data that we have can be very granular and be, we could be very student specific that we can't share out to the population. But we already have a lot of, we run tiered supports here. Tier one is education services. It's me, principals, it's the school counselors. Tier two, you get into 504s. Tier three, you get into special education. You look at our dashboard or, and we have the data on our side. When you start to go to those individual students, a lot of the students that scored a one or two on CASP. Are already receiving a lot of services from student services. So we are a small enough district that as we see an increase, we have a lot of EL kids. So you'll see directly on the dashboard, our two areas of focus are students with disabilities and English learners. Not that we don't have a lot of really great services or interventions, but those are our two target populations. You look at the rest of any of our other subgroups, they are scoring threes or fours as blues and greens on the dashboard. Well, and, and fortunately we want to put them in with the rest of them, but we have to be specific in what does that mean for us? No, yes, yes. But what does that mean for us as far as interventions go? Yeah, yes, yes, yes. No, yes, yes, yes. But that's the piece that again, when you're unpacking and you're looking at data raw at home and you're saying, oh, well, they're decreasing or this change. Well, the game did change. The dashboard's only been here for three years. Here's specific, more specific information that's transparent to the community that clearly indicates where we need to make sure that we're spending our funds. And making sure that we're supporting, because it's not all kids are struggling in our district. You know what I mean? It's clear that more than half an ever grade band, if not larger, but are exceeding.
And that, I think that's the message that hasn't gotten out because we all, I think most of us suffer from math blindness.
Yes.
I myself, I have to really look at things to understand. And unfortunately, the wrong narrative gets out and it's not accurate. Do I think we need more kids to be at the exceeded? Absolutely.
Yes.
But is it like a, a huge plummet? No, not.
But and allowing us to really look at, if we look at sixth grade, how many students at that point have we identified for tier two, tier three interventions? What do those interventions look like? What are those families doing? And, and, and we're not hearing from them. You know, like if we're providing the services that need to be, and that could be, we have a significant amount of EL kids too, for a very small district. I oversee the EL program and it takes up 60% of my day in conversation in a good way. I love to do the work.
Those students.
Let's do it.
Great thing about Beverly Hills is it's a very dynamic city. You have people coming in. There's people who will rent your home, you know, for several thousand dollars a month because they're here for a six-month stint with Sony. And then they're gone. So we have people who come in and out and we have disadvantages in the sense that there are some kids that we haven't grown. We haven't grown them. We can't follow them. We can't have, um, miss so-and-so from fifth grade. Talk to so-and-so from last year to get a sense of this kid and what really works. Because we don't, they, they weren't part of our family. They might just come in and out. It's a very dynamic town. Unfortunately, there are families that, um, can't stay for a number of reasons. There's changes in the families, families, um, are, have never been so unstable in general in this nation. Um, so there's a lot of changes that don't necessarily work in favor of very positive academics. Especially in a small district where those effects are magnified in size and in, um, in the way, in the way we see it in magnitude, because they're so small, it's such a small district.
And just to leave you there is an example would be if we were to look at third grade El Rodeo, because we were talking about that. Those that fall in that category are 15, 13 of them are already receiving tier three interventions at El Rodeo now. Yeah. Well, meaning, and they might've already been receiving those services last year. They may have already been under, um, either tier two or tier three. So they are getting that individualized care. And some of them may not have unfortunately the capacity at this point to maybe get further than a one. Or maybe a two at this point, because we're working diligently to close the educational gaps through IEP or 504 plan.
When are we talking about the board policies you mentioned? Do we need a study session or can we put it on the next agenda?
Well, okay, just looking at the agenda, uh, agenda here now, we have, so with the approval of the strategic plan, I don't think we actually took a vote. We didn't. So how are we feeling about taking a vote? Okay, uh, all in favor or we, we had a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of the approval of the strategic plan, 24, 25. All favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving to board. Yeah, no, it's good.
Yeah, it's good. I mean, this is, we actually talk about academics tonight, so I'm, I'm okay. In, in any policies that we, that we beat this horse.
This is what we've been waiting to talk about all these years.
Yeah. And in any policies that you want us to review, just let.
Well, I think, I think that there's been, there's been discussions about these policies. Um, Dr. Seaman has brought them up about things that we can do. I always stress that, you know, people, um, wonder what boards can do in these regards, these policies.
I'm sorry, which policies are we talking about? Because I have some here.
Dr. Seaman mentioned.
About intervention and.
Summer school limitations.
Right, certain policies that, that we can look at and we can change. Directly impact the supporting students, um, and that's something that I get excited about. Cause that's, that's our job.
I know.
Right? That's actually our job. So I, I look forward to bringing those back.
Well, I'm sorry, what number? Tell me what.
Well, we have, we have the 5,000 that's coming up. So you have.
Were they, it's a 6,000, yeah.
No, I, I know. But what I'm saying is we, we still have the, the 5,000 is that last section that we have. And then what we can all, you know, obviously start looking at some of those. I'm just talking from our next thing that's up is, is this section of the 5,000 that you have. We have to continue doing that. We can also be looking at some of these in the 6,000s. But I just want us to stay on track.
Focused.
For, for that.
You want to get those 5,000s done. I hear you, Dr. Buggy.
Yes.
Um, President Stern, uh, Dr. Seaman sent us an email referencing the specific 6,000s that he's talking about. So if you go back and correct.
Yeah.
Or in the words of the board connection.
Yeah, I did see a little mention of that. Okay. So then can we move now?
Moving on, discussion.
Discussion world languages, BBMS, BHHS, great topic. Um, who would like to?
Rochelle, I have a couple of questions to under. I have a couple of questions to understand the world languages landscape, but you brought the topic up. Do you want to go first?
Okay. Um, I was brought to my attention that, um, through conversations and so on, that we're having a difficulty in the high school with a specific language. Many years ago, and I was on the board at the time, we were having trouble with the numbers of kids in class. This is a historic background right now. And we decided at that time that we could maybe, because the numbers in the French classes and were so low. That we were going to combine French three honors and French three together. The teachers didn't like it, but they evidently adapted to it. I, I have a feeling that that has also happened in the Spanish situation. Where Spanish three and Spanish honors are sort of co-mingled and taught. And the kids that are getting caught in that are having a difficult time and want to get out. So as I understand it, there is a class now of like two kids. I'm not sure. I'm only, that's what I've been, I'm, I'm just reporting what I heard. However, I, in addition to all that, I'd like to go back to the pathways program, which I think may affect it. In sixth grade, the students come from fifth, fifth grade and they have an opportunity to take two electives. Many students at that time decide they'd like to start foreign language and they take foreign language A. And then in seventh grade, they go on to foreign language B. And then in that eighth grade, they have to take foreign language one. And they go to the high school and they now take their foreign language two. And many of them, for whatever reason, are not ready at that point and they continue on and they struggle. Then they go to three or the, I believe at two, they can only have.
Is it okay if I correct you just to make sure that I understand it? A and B equals one.
One.
And then in the eighth grade, they could take two.
Or one, they can go back and take one again, because they want to, they want to take one at the eighth grade. So they can take two at the high school and then they will go on and take three for their three years at the, uh, next year. So they have their three years of foreign language. My feeling is, is that the kids that are coming in, uh, to sixth grade. They have four very solid subjects and they get two electives and PE. So my thinking was that they should take the two electives to experience them. And then if they want to take a foreign language in seventh grade, they can take A and B in eighth grade and go back to. And if they're really good, they can take foreign language two at the high school at ninth grade, or they can go back and take one. I, I feel that the chance to, because once they take foreign language in the sixth grade, they're limited to one elective every three years. At the, in the middle school. And that's the thinking that my brain presents. Then they get to the high school and now we've got a problem where the kids are struggling. I'm hearing that. And they go to the counselor and they, I can't do it. I can't do it. I want to drop. And they're being told they can't drop. I don't know why they're being told that. Because if, if a kid is failing in something and they really don't belong in honors three. Because that, that's just not, why can't they switch? I don't know. Matt, I don't know if the teacher is teaching. Well, the honors, whether they're, these were, the kids go into honors three and they can't handle it.
But just, this is, are you hearing this among all languages?
I'm hearing it mainly amongst, I, I, amongst the Spanish field. I do not hear any complaints from the French. I, I'm hearing that the teachers are pushing them out of the class because it's too hard. And they go to the counselor and they can't get into any other class because that, they can't change their class now. But they're going to fail or they're getting a D.
And some of these kids are historically all As.
There's, they're kids that take honors class.
Getting a C and it's not like the, the pattern of, of the performance you see with that kid and that's.
At any rate, all I'm trying to say is what's going on, why are we having these problems? Is it, is, I don't know, but I, I, I feel there's something wrong. I know historically we tried a combination honors and, and a, a regular class together. And the teachers were delineating between them as to the work that they gave them. But I don't know that it's happening in Spanish. I remembered that this was, I was basically hearing about the low class numbers in French. And that was why we tried it in French. I don't know if that was done in Spanish. If there's still a Spanish regular three or a Spanish honors three, I don't know. But all I know is that the kids are going and they can't hack the subject.
Okay. So I only talk in data, right? And so I'm gonna.
I know.
I'm gonna put it all out there for you guys.
Which is good.
Yep. In 20, 19, 2020, I was actually in my kitchen zooming with our world language department. Because we had just reconfigured the district and we're able to offer them for the first time, sixth through eighth grade world language. Which in the middle school can take one A, which is, so Spain, we're going to use Spanish. Spanish is Spanish one. We took first semester and stretched it out over a year. So we call that one A in the middle school. So they take first semester of freshman Spanish over a full year. Then one B is the second semester of Spanish one stretched out over a whole year. So they're really taking Spanish one over two full years in the middle school to create that foundational level. Then because we were able to reconfigure, because remember before reconfiguration, we had one French teacher running around to all four campuses. Trying to even give anybody a French class at all. A lot of times we were, depending on the schedules, anyway, that's a whole different story. But so then Spanish two. The goal is to allow students access, especially our AP and honors kids predominantly focused for this pathway. To be able to take AP Spanish, AP French, or Hebrew and literature by their junior year. Because what happened in the past and continues to still happen right now. Is a lot of them will say, well, I've taken up to the fourth level and don't take the fifth level, which is the AP level. I've taken up to four levels. I'm going to jump out and I'm going to go take AP psychology, which I want you to take. However, because you can only take so many courses. And these are also the kids that'll say, I want to take seven classes plus I want to take a course at the junior college. Now, so that's what the pathway is for. The pathway isn't geared for everybody. And we do do our best to counsel some families to not jump in as a sixth grade student. That you may not be able to achieve at a high level. However, I'm going to back this up. There's also a group of parents in our community that wants to run dual immersion programs at the elementary level. That want us to bring Spanish and French and Hebrew down to the elementary level. But they are also frustrated that we offered at the middle school. So I, you know, you, you're kind of stuck in this in between. However, the goal is always, how, how do we look at our data? How do we give them the best opportunity to build the best transcript? And there are students and here's the data from last year, we, you guys, I was up here talking about this in October of last year. Because we made this change in 20, 20, 21 school year. We consolidated because we did have Spanish four honors with 31 kids. And then Spanish four with four kids. And here's the reality, if A through G requires two years of world language, okay, that's the requirement. The definition of honors or extra credit is going beyond the requirement. So when you elect to go past the level two, going into level three, why don't they get honors credit? And that was the question that we consistently asked ourselves is. Is if they're going past the requirement, why can't they? Now, to the data. Last year, we had. Uh, let me start off this year. This year, we have forty eight students in honor Spanish four. Forty eight students.
Forty eight in honors.
Honor Spanish four.
Right. That was when they registered.
No, no, they're in it right now. Honor Spanish four today. And the reason I say this is because last year, we had the same conversation about a small population of students that were struggling because it was a transition into high school. And I'm, can't talk about anything else other than that, is the course. And we were nervous because it was one of the first years that the kids actually got the full three years of middle school to take. Then the honor Spanish three, honors French three at the high school. Now, this time last year, there are eighty three students enrolled in honor Spanish three. Forty eight of them have continued through to honors Spanish four. Meaning they completed honors three as a freshman. And they're able to move on to that next level. So there's over, more than fifty percent of the population were successful and even still got to continue on to the next level. And we haven't heard from any of them asking to drop out of honor Spanish four at this time. Now, in our current enrollment, I think it's important for everyone to understand that we do have seventy five kids enrolled in that honor Spanish three.
Seventy five in honors Spanish.
Three. Of that, we had fourteen requests for level downs. What we are asking is that individualized meeting. We are asking them to meet with the school counselor and the teacher because just yesterday, there was three individual meetings. Of those, two decided to stay in honors three, and only one moved back. Her meeting is tomorrow morning, the person that came and spoke at Open. So she's meeting tomorrow morning with, but so we have eight freshmen that are requesting this change. We have five sophomores. Now, here's what I want to highlight about this. They took Spanish two at the high school. So no one can say, because there's also a narrative that the middle school isn't preparing them enough. Well, if that's the case, then why is five of them current sophomores that are asking to level down when they took Spanish two here, not in the middle school? And one junior, who isn't even a part of this process? So of the fourteen, eight freshmen, five sophomores, and one junior. So I mean, when you look at the data and actually look at the individualized cases.
But Dr. Seaman, sorry.
What is, how many students are in each class?
Well, that's gonna, I have to pull a whole query, so.
But have you done the same thing wherein, for example, I remember we discussed this last year, and my understanding was that the state requires that the Spanish three kids, students, and the honor Spanish three students cover the same material.
Same standards. It's the exact same framework.
So that's why you were thinking, well, why not give everybody credit where credit is due? I know where you're coming from. But is that, is that the same thing for Hebrew and French?
Correct.
So so for for Hebrew three, Spanish three, French three, we only have honors.
Correct.
And then how about for four?
Only honors.
They're in honors.
For the class of twenty twenty seven and above.
Yeah, I guess, going forward.
Yep.
Okay. So I'm with you there.
And then that leads into AP, except for in Hebrew, we created about five years ago a course called Hebrew and Literature. Kalia, myself.
Yeah.
I mean, at the time, we had.
That's the fifth year of Hebrew.
Correct, because we do not have an AP version.
You are offering no Spanish three anymore. There's no Spanish three.
We have it for two years.
No foreign language three.
No world language three or four, because they should get extra credit because they are going.
They're only going to get honors.
Okay, okay.
But the kids that get into Spanish three now find out that they can't hack it, a number that you just gave me, and they want to drop down.
So so would I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw something out there, just because one, it's partly, it's a HR thing, and the other piece of it is just around process. I have a larger list for honors biology. Why aren't we talking about that out loud?
Why, you have what?
You know what I'm saying? So like, this is just, this is, this is school.
Dr. Seaman.
Yep, yep.
So there's a little rumor that the board has dictated a new policy which says that the students are not allowed to level down. And so what I'm hearing you say is that that's not the case, and the same period, is it five weeks?
Yeah, five weeks.
Is the, the policy is the same as the policy was? The difference is, is that you guys are making an effort to retain the kids in that level.
Correct.
However, it ultimately becomes a family decision.
Thousand percent.
Okay. But I also want to clarify, we're, we are not hearing this same discussion about French or Hebrew, but year over year, we're hearing it about.
Spanish.
Spanish. Okay. Thank you. So Rochelle, were you going in the direction of trying to limit or not allow foreign language in the sixth grade?
I understood why there is no, I mean, a kid can take, a student can take Spanish two, plain, spa, regular, Spanish two honors, correct?
No, two honors. One and two are regular courses, because they're basically.
There's no honors in one and two that a kid can prepare to take honors in three.
There's no, so so let's back this up a little bit. So the framework was adopted in twenty twenty one, is the new world language framework. And that is the conversation, that is the framework I use to have the conversation with the world language department in the district. Here are your standards. Here's the content expected.
No, I understand.
Yep, yep. So what, but what we were doing was, we were saying, here's your Spanish four, and you would have a Spanish four section with five to seven kids, right? Where you're talking about that low section numbers, where technically, if it was any other elective, we would have direction to collapse that because it's under fifteen kids.
Okay. I just, just to clarify something. What I'm hearing is that supposedly, I now that students in Spanish, if, let's say a student decides to take Spanish one in ninth grade, doesn't do anything in the middle school. They take one, and then in the, they like it, and they're doing well, and they're a student. There's no chance for an honors class at the second year in the high school, correct?
No.
You only have, you only have Spanish one at the high school and Spanish two. So there's really no, and when they get to Spanish three, they gotta take honors.
Okay, but what is the definition of honors? Honors is going past the requirement. So like, as a teacher, if you gave extra credit.
If they, if they need three years of foreign language to get into a university.
They need two. A through G requirements is two years. Our graduation requirements are two years. We recommend three to four. You should take four. I'll watch you. I'm just kidding.
All right. I I was under the impression, some of the schools require three.
Yeah, but but we can say the same thing in math.
What about the California schools? Two?
Yeah, it's two, yeah, A through G requirements are two.
So that two is the requirement. But then the student desires to go back east to another school, a prestigious school, if you want to say it, Princeton, Harvard, Yale, whatever, Dartmouth. And it requires three years of a language. Now they gotta take three years of the language, but they have to take it in honors. And because there was no Spanish three, they now have only honors. And so have they been properly prepared in one and two to take Spanish three honors is all I'm asking? Because that seems to be the problem. And if these kids, when they want to take the third year, get to Spanish three, and they're struggling because they have to take Spanish honors, they want to drop out and just go with three regular, and they can't because there is no three regular, and I understand that. But the problem is, is that how can we correct that, or how can we address that for our students? Because we do want them to have a chance to apply to four, and and they may, I don't know. I'm just saying that I think that's, it's a dilemma for the kid because he gets to the two, and I I want to take three years, but I gotta take honors. And you're saying, well, but at that point, they really should be just honors, because that, and that may not be true. I mean, I don't know, but I mean, if they're stupendous in language, they'll do, you know, they'll handle it. But I'm hearing too many kids that are struggling in Spanish in honors three.
But I, I, and I, I think you might know that list. But when you look at the overall numbers and the numbers of students in the program, I would beg differ. Do I believe that there's a section problem? And there could be a conversation that we need to have individually with all those eight freshmen? Hundred percent. And that's what's happening currently. There's eight freshmen that were having this conversation around.
And some may need to go back.
How did they get to Spanish three in ninth grade?
Because they.
AB and.
Well, AB is only one year.
One A, one B, and two.
No, no. Six, seventh grade, they took Spanish, they took AB, that's one.
Yeah.
And now they're in ninth, eighth grade, they take.
Two.
Yes.
Okay, so they now get to ninth, yeah, ninth grade.
But but it may be for some students, and and this goes for any subject area, they they may need to take, go back. And the, those are some.
Now they're being told by the, I hope that they're given the option that they can do this because we are being told that this is a board policy, which I guess.
He already said that's not the case.
They, they have set up, so Mr. Stewart, Shannon, all the counselors have set up individualized meetings. They had a meeting with the teacher. The teacher is now setting up with the school counselor individual meetings. An example is yesterday, there were three meetings held, because there's only so much free time during the day.
Yeah.
In those three meetings, two decided to actually stay. So that number that I provided with you of the eight, take two of them out, there's actually six. One did agree to drop to Spanish two, so one's left. And there's still five more of those freshman meetings coming up.
I understand. So my point is that if these kids had not started foreign language until seventh grade, we may not be facing this dilemma because they would have gotten A and B in seventh and eighth, and they could have taken Spanish two or one if they wanted to at the ninth grade level, and two, and then they could decide whether they had their two years or not. So they would, because if they had to go to three, it had to be honors.
I I hear that. Now, my counterargument to that, for the community to always consider, is we also have forty eight kids now sitting in honor Spanish four, and most of them are sophomores.
I'm not saying to drop.
No, no, I'm saying if they wouldn't have started in sixth grade.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Then they would, they would only be in three right now, and so.
AP as juniors.
Yes, they can take AP as juniors, which then allows them to take other AP courses that are more passionate about maybe.
If they take the AP as a junior, they can take the SAT in Spanish, which is what I did.
Content.
Okay, primero no entiendo nada.
I, I took French.
No, I'm gonna, I just, I'm wondering, I don't know, this is, you said this is the second year we're doing this.
Yep.
I I want to be about possible solutions.
Yeah.
Um, we already understand the issue. Was this an issue last year as well? Did we have to go through some of this last year?
Uh, we did. We had, we had a similar conversation where there, at last year, I have the exact same communication.
It was a yes or no question?
Yep.
So thank you very much. So is it possible then that if we are going in this case, to have eighth graders go into Spanish or honor Spanish three? Those that qualify, because that's where we're seeing the problem. Is is there a way to do like a placement exam, like colleges do, just to make sure that they're in the right place? To weed that out? So I don't know if that's anything we've thought about, but it might be a way for us to prevent this from happening, if we want to prevent it from happening.
Or what grade do you need to get in Spanish two to get into honors three?
But so, so we are actually.
The grade is inconsistent. That's why I don't want to rely on a grade.
But we, thousand percent, and we are actually meeting as the six twelve world language department on September twenty fifth to have these exact conversations. Last year at this, not this exact date meeting, but when I had this conversation with the board, there were eleven students that we were discussing last year in the honor Spanish three, which was thirteen percent of the overall enrollment. Last year, we were discussing, and then this year, it is eight of the freshmen. And like I said, two are staying, one's going to drop down.
I feel that the right kind of placement exam would would cure, not all of it, some of it.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe most of it. You'd still probably have a bump or two, but it would eliminate a lot of this. That's.
But no, it looks like the other foreign languages don't require the same thing, so there's something going on.
It looks like we need more time to talk about this, but we have spent, okay.
We don't know about those that haven't come forward yet.
That's true. But we have spent, I think, nearly an hour on this, and I'm going to recommend colleagues that we go to.
In the next discussion.
Right.
Can I just say thank you for, Dr. Seaman, for addressing this with us and for looking into these possible solutions? Because I think it happens once, it's a fluke. It happens twice. It may be chronic, so we need to try to get on top of it.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Okay, so discussion of board policy four one one two point eight, and board policy four one two one, and administrative regulation or AR forty one twenty one. So we have them, we have them here, right?
Or here.
Or on your, yeah, on your screen, and.
Save the trees.
Save the trees. I didn't print this. I think everyone does have a printed copy. So are we discussing, is this a reading?
I don't know who brought this. I don't.
I don't know either.
I think I asked for some of these policies.
Yes, Mrs. Mancheri had asked.
I appreciate that. But what I would like to do is review them, and then I'll get back to you.
Sure.
Should I have any further questions?
Of course.
Can I just ask, the, I always ask this, but the yellow means this is what now exists in pub, like, this is the the given? Or is this a suggested revise?
No, this is what we currently have.
Okay. So then, next page for the temporary substitute personnel, it's, photocopy says adopted. So this is, this is what exists with no suggestions? This is what's there?
Right. This is, because we've gone through the four thousands.
Okay, so all of these are how they exist now, and it's just open for some.
Some of it is a matter of, we've told you that we're not big fans of Symbli, which is the hosting agent for our policies.
Yeah.
Um, and so some of this where it says pending is that it's, it's, it's sitting there waiting to be uploaded into the system that's really archaic. And so that's something that.
That's what pending means.
Ms. Austin and I are are looking at it changing, because it's it's so archaic. Um, but so consider this is like, this is the, this is the actual policy that we are using. And so, and and if there are going to be additional recommendations from CSBA, we don't have them yet.
But we could still weigh in on if we had a question or some sort of.
Right. And I would say to my colleagues, if we're having done these policies this past couple of years and very extensively, I would say that if you are considering making adjustments or something to the policy, make sure that they don't conflict with the ed code portion. See if there's things that we can actually address, so we're not spinning our wheels.
Yeah.
So, and I'm, I fully support looking at policies. I'm not saying that. I'm just to to save us aggravation when we get back together with the policy, so we don't, it's not an ed code thing.
You're saying if it's, if it's.
If it says ed code, we can't touch it, don't touch it. If it's a part that we can, then we can bring that back as a suggestion, and it also has to go through usually a revision and a first and second reading.
Correct.
So just keep that in mind.
I, my que, my, what I wanted to learn more about is about people in teaching positions, whether it's teachers, instructional assistants, substitutes, or others of their, at the same school that their children are in. That's what I wanted to know about. So do I have all of the policies that relate to that, because I'm seeing?
Three of them. What is board policy?
I'm seeing employment of, yeah, I'm seeing employment of relatives, which I think is a different.
Well, these are all just that that are in some way related. So, because there's, there's really not, you'll find that really nothing is related unless it was more of a supervisory type position. And just as a reminder, because we have had these discussions before, we've had issues with this before. We only have one high school. We only have middle school.
Yeah, so it would apply to elementary school.
If you look at it for elementary school, you can look at that. Um, that's the only place we can really juggle it.
Thank you. So would we?
Yeah, I assume you want to.
Sure.
Did we ever, after we went through all of these policies, and did I hear you correctly? We have not gotten them back from the state for their approval on the ones that we did? They're not back from us?
So, no, they're, they're, they're done. They're, they're approved by the board.
They're the ones that we are posting right now.
Right, right.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
So I do have one question for you.
Sure.
Do, do these three that you provided us reflect all the potential scenarios? Do they speak to all the different groups? Or it looks like there might be more.
Um, when, when you mean groups, what do you mean?
Like, there's teachers, there's instructional assistants, there are IAs. I'm sorry, that was, there are substitutes, short term and long, so.
This, if you remember from the four thousand policies, it, that they are kind of grouped in different areas. So the same policy may be in place for the instructional assistance.
Like a mirror.
Credential, yeah, like certificated.
Okay.
Also in the administrative staff.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and keep in mind that, you know, we can, we can look at some additions, we can look at, but these are the most up to date as as of now.
Okay. We can move to communication from the board members. We can start with Remy. Any communication?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Margot?
Thank you. I do hope to see everybody there Sunday for the We Were the Lucky Ones event. I have, I'm on my fifth book this summer. I love these events because they start me off the summer. I start reading, and then I just go reading crazy, and I'm enjoying it. I want to wish a happy birthday to Beverly Hills Weekly editor, Josh Gross. Today's his birthday. And I also, in my head, I just wanted to say to everybody, put down the phone and pick up a book.
Nothing at this time.
I just want to mention that the only meeting, basically, I attended was the less is more, the less, we already talked about that. I have several meetings coming up that we will be attending, and in the interest of time, I'm making my report short.
Uh, nothing further to add, thank you. And with that, I think we're adjourned. He's applauding, because we ended it.